Call this meeting in order, stand for the pledge, if you please.
I know.
Shorthanded.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Our first thing is a meeting with Stephanie Bork with the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Stephanie, are you with us?
She's not with us.
Well, we will move on if she gets... There?
No, she's not here.
Okay. We'll move on. Amendments to the agenda.
No sir, none sir.
I have none.
Good news. Criminal amendments to December 3rd.
Make a motion to approve the amendments for December 3rd as written?
Second.
Additions, deletions, corrections. Just for everybody's information, we had two meetings in a row to juggle the Thanksgiving holiday and the upcoming Christmas holiday, so that's why there's one last week and one this week. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Five minutes for public comment. This is gonna be popular night.
Mr. Gump, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to see if I could get some clarification to make sure the information I heard was accurate regarding the trailer park down there on Airport Road. But I was told that there was a water break and it was on the property owner's side of the curb stop, which is my understanding supposed to be the responsibility of the property owner and that we paid it. I did look at the ordinance. Apparently for emergency repairs, the town can repair it and they're supposed to charge at the listed rate. I couldn't find the listed rates anywhere. I'm kind of wondering how much we're charging for that.
Not enough.
And, uh, you know, if that ordinance might be looked at because I know that when that was put in, that park was put in, it was put in with used parts. So potentially I could see if we can only charge a set amount, us replacing the entire infrastructure for the park on the taxpayers' dime. And that just doesn't seem right to me. And I'd also would like to know, are, is there any delinquent amount on the water bill? Have they been paid? Has the town been paid for the water that's been going to that park? If not, how much? And is there a delinquent amount on the taxes? Because it really seems even worse if, I've heard that they owe us tens of thousands of dollars and then we're still fixing their water and we're still providing them water for free. I don't quite understand why, if I didn't pay my water bill, the water get turned off. You know, and I've asked about it before and it's, I guess there's a threat of a lawsuit. Well, let's go to court. Who cares? I mean, we're gonna spend more in paying somebody else's water than we're gonna end up paying for a lawyer. And if the lawyer can't handle this one, we need a new lawyer. That's my opinion.
Do you want to give that overview or at least answer those questions?
Oh, I can answer some of the questions, yes. So fifteen, fifteen hundred dollars is the maximum we can charge? I did send, I did total up that bill and sent the bill to the state today, their Trailer Park Division, which I forget what the total was, but I sent them our total cost. Whether they paid it or not is a whole other story.
And is it a ordinance that we can only charge? We can't charge what it really costs? We can only charge fifteen hundred dollars?
It was, it was written a long time ago when fifteen hundred dollars was plenty.
Because I, I looked through the ordinance, I couldn't find the rates anywhere. I don't know where it is, but I looked on the website and I couldn't find it. And if that is the case, I would very much request that this board remove that. Because it's not right that, there's other people that are struggling to get by too and they're struggling to pay their taxes, struggling to pay their own water bills, and then we gotta pay for somebody else's as well. It's, it's just not right. So I would ask the board to review that ordinance and make some necessary adjustments. So how, how much do they owe the town?
Right now, they owe the town twenty-one thousand in water and sixty-something thousand in back taxes from twenty, dating back to 2020.
Can I ask why this is, we're not, if I owed that, you'd be owning my house by now.
First and foremost, we don't want it.
I got a nice house.
Yeah, well, no, not your house. I don't want the trailer park.
I know, I know, but I mean...
And secondly, it's in probate and it's, and we're being sued. So it puts everything in limbo. And it's the way it is. It's not, it's not pretty and we've got, we've got a lawyer that, that will tell us to go with the flow until we get this settled out legally. And that's, that's where we're at.
It might be close to time to get a second opinion from a different lawyer in light of him.
I, I, short, short answer is, I hear ya and we're, we're going to be looking at the ordinance, okay? Understand what you're saying and there's quite a few people on this board feel the same way, so we hear you.
We definitely want to review the ordinance soon, I hope. Thank you.
Yep. Hey, you made it within your five minutes, too.
I got nothing else either.
So, last night, the weather was not good. The roads were horrible. I had to come, we were driving home, we went the back way from Rutland because I wasn't gonna get on the highway. And so we came through West Rutland, we came through, um, you know, Castleton, Hydeville, I mean, we just got, I gotta tell you, we got into Fairhaven and the roads were almost perfect. We have the freaking best Department of Public Works. We really do. I gotta really commend them. So I just wanted that put out there. We had the best roads.
Thank you. Good news. We'd like to hear good news.
Last night.
Thank you. We will pass that on to the...
Please do.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Good evening, thanks for letting me speak here. I don't recognize anybody here. My name's Kevin Hoyt. I'm from Bennington, I ran for Vermont State Governor. I was arrested in your little town, falsely arrested and detained on July 4th of 2024. And I went to an incarceration where I was forced injected with the second assassination attempt on my life, right? So I'm here to talk about your law enforcement today. I got a number of enforcement officers I want to talk about. We're gonna start with Tom Cavino. You guys are familiar with Mr. Cavino? Seems to have a habit of beating people up, right? So he has two abuse prevention orders in the state of New York where he's not allowed to have a gun. But here in Vermont, we give him a gun and a badge on top of that. So again, in Paulette, in Rupert, and here in Fairhaven, Vermont. He was hired by William Humphries, your chief of police. So I want to get into his record, part of his, part of his criminal record. He's convicted of robbery, again, over in Granville, New York from earning Basset. He stole a light bar and a police radio from the Granville Police Department. That ties us back in, by the way, to the mass murder of the Crossman family in Paulette, Vermont. That's for another meeting, we only get five minutes. So he had to buy these things because he was, after he got out of Vermont Corrections with his bestie, Bill Humphries, Bill appointed him. Bill was constable in Paulette at the time. He appointed Tom Cavino. Tom had to buy his own equipment. So what he didn't steal, he had to buy a car. He bought a radar detector. Again, it's not, you know, hasn't been calibrated or certified by the state. But anyway, this is how, how you have to do to play an officer in Vermont State. So he needed this gear, anyway. On October 15th, 2024, at the Paulette Select Board Meeting, Tom Cavino is requesting Bill Humphries comes back and train him, right? So that's kind of interesting. He reminded the board that he got out of law enforcement in 2003 and he's not certified. So he wants Bill, apparently he needs to be trained and Bill needs more money. So he wants Bill to come back. Now I'm guessing in the last 21 years, Mr. Cavino, while pretending to be a police officer, has written a lot of tickets. Now, the police department is the municipality, so unfortunately you guys are left holding the bag. You're liable. The real unfortunate part is the good people of Fairhaven and the taxpayers of Vermont are the ones that's gonna pay the bill for this. But I wanted to make sure you guys know that you have a cop that's not really a cop that was appointed by a two-time convicted cop, right? And we can talk about Bill Humphries, I only know, I got five minutes. So we'll bring Bill Humphries' criminal record in maybe at the next Select Board Meeting. Number of officers, and I'll leave this, because again, I know I'm a timer with bonding, because no one in their right mind would insure these two crowds. So my suggestion and advice for you guys is to start looking for officers, right? And I recommend contacting your lawyer, unless your lawyer's Merrill Bat, but I'd also recommend getting a new lawyer. And that's about it. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. And if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Any questions?
No questions, thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Merry Christmas.
Speaker of Mary?
I'm here for the cemetery committee. We'd like to take over the care of the cemetery trees and we'd like part of the tree budget into ours.
Oh, is that, there's a cemetery committee, so wouldn't they already have all the cemeteries? Which is Cemetery 3, which one are you calling the?
Both. Both, so what cemetery? Cedar and Western.
Okay.
We done, we done a lot of tree work in the cemetery this year, if I remember right.
Yeah, but we have to, um, the problem is that we have to keep hounding and hounding to get it done. And, uh, and right now, we have a dead tree in West Street and a limb that's hanging over some of the stones. And if it falls, it takes out the stones that we've been working to fix. So, I mean, we're just, it just seems like it would be simpler if we would just say, oh, this tree needs to be done and...
Well, the, the biggest problem is its cost.
Yeah. Well, yeah, trees are very expensive, yeah.
We, we paid, what, what did we pay? Eleven thousand dollars? And eleven thousand dollars to take one big bull pine out? Eleven thousand dollars. So there is, there is a lot of, of, you know, it isn't like we could go through and do a logging operation.
No, no, and you don't have to. It's not, they're not all bad. It's just, a lot of it is just taking the tree, uh, taking a limb off or something to save the stones.
I mean, we need, we need some specifics and see what we got for the budget, right? I mean, that's, that would be the, and what is, what is the most, uh, the one that's most needed, you know? It may not be in the cemetery, that's the problem, you know? So we have to, we have to raise...
Well, I know you have a, I know you have a tree budget of ten thousand dollars. Um, and I, I assume that goes some with the park and stuff, so...
That's for, yeah, that's for the whole town.
Which doesn't allow, but...
So we may, we may want to consider upping the budget, the tree budget, to compensate for everything. Because obviously a ten thousand dollar budget doesn't get it done when we're spending eleven thousand on one tree. No money left to do that limb you're talking about.
Is there any, I don't remember, we did the cemetery the other, a couple weeks ago. Oh, there's, is there any tree budget in that at all? I don't remember.
You got a little bit of repairs and maintenance, but the tree comes out of public works.
Well, we could do, oh no, repairs and maintenance is gonna be the tractors and the...
There's other purchase services, there's two thousands there, two thousand there that you could use for trees.
Maybe we can punch that up a little bit when we, we're in the process of finishing up the first round of budget, then we go back and see if we can, where we, what we missed and where we can afford to do more or where we have to cut.
They, because we worked hard to get those old stones fixed up and then to have a tree come down on them again, it's kind of...
Yeah. Oh, we're not, we, we understand the plight. So we'll, we'll continue. We, you're welcome to come back when we do it again. I mean, it's, it's not over yet, but, uh, it may be that we end up with two thousand dollars and that's it. Maybe we can, that should be enough to get some limbs done or something, but it's, we're just in a tight budget situation, you know?
Maybe, maybe we should find somebody that would do a quote on that limb, if that limb out there.
Then we're promising to do it.
Once we get a quote, we maybe I'll find some money somewhere. But we don't know what we're talking for money till we get a quote.
Again, I'm not from the community, but Gary's Tree Service, he works up here, Paulette, Rupert, all the way up there all around. He's very affordable, I bet he'd give you a quote for free.
We'll, we'll keep talking with you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I noticed the upstairs, there's lights and activity. Are you guys decorating for a Christmas party or are we still playing games with that?
I think they're training up there tonight.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Is that it?
Peter?
Bob. Keith Hyer, thank you, it's my first time here. I have a couple things, a couple questions. I'm not sure what the Skyline grant is or what that says, so, but I, I inherited the home I live in, I've always been back in town though four years now. And where does the sewer line up at that end of the town cut off? I think, it's two things this is what I gotta do, is pay taxes and die. And so far, I'm still paying my taxes, but I ain't dead yet. So I'm just curious, I have no problem with my taxes being up, if I can somehow hook into the town sewer, I'm already on town water. So I'm just curious, how far does it go up? Does it hook the skyline, does it cut off at the Legion?
It stops, the, the sewer stops at Jay Brown's house, but there's a Forest Main, if I'm correct, across the road at the Legion that comes from Skyline.
So, so Jay Brown's on town sewer?
Yeah.
At the Legion on town sewer?
Uh, they're on that, that Forest Main, so you'd have to cut into that Forest Main, I think is...
Now, what would...
No, they're not?
No. The Legion, the Legion main comes down to the Forest Main Hall at the municipal line, just, just north, just between your house and Jay Brown's.
That's the Forest Main. Forest Main goes to that, to Jay Brown's house. That much I know.
If it's that close, I'm...
You'd have to go, you'd have to go into the road or through the road and, and do that.
At my cost, if I wanted that to, and I'm just, I don't know, I'm asking at my cost, right?
Yeah. I mean, that's why I, I put a septic in, a new septic.
No, I understand. You and I talked tremendously about this. I was just like, mine was grandfathered in from my great-grandparents when they owned the house in the eighteen nineties. I mean, it's...
So you'd have to go across the road.
That's how old, I mean, my house is, you know? I mean, I'm living in it and trying to remind at the same time, I'm losing everything I've done here, but I'm...
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I know.
And to finish, thank you, um, I don't know this gentleman from the man of the moon, but as a football coach after winning a state championship, I want to thank Mr. Humphries for setting up a phenomenal parade through all these towns for our winning championship football team. I don't have a dog in this fight, like I said, I don't know you, sir, but I've never had an issue with any police and I tell my kids, you ever in doubt, always go to the cops. Everybody has skeletons in their closet. And I have nothing but utmost respect for Mr. Humphries and your guys as police force. Like I says, I have nothing against you, sir, I don't know you.
That's right, I understand that, and I back the blue.
This is my, my personal feeling.
No, that's, that's, I back the blue, but not officers like William Humphries. And again, when we get into his...
We already talked about, we already talked...
I don't want to, because I, I like the man, so it's...
I appreciate that, and I appreciate his civil service, too.
With, with regards to the sewer, come and talk to Joe and you can, you can get a, exactly what you have to do.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going from memory of what I had on...
That's why I love Humphries, I wanted to discuss this because it's been in my mind for the four years I've been back in town and, and being a homeowner now here in town paying my taxes, I'm like, I don't care if they have my taxes, I just want to hook in the damn town sewer. You know what I mean?
Skyline put that Forest Main in through and, and the water line.
Yeah.
I think that's where it stopped, I could be wrong.
Just a question, what is the Skyline grant? Will you get to that after, in your agenda here?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm not sure what that is, I just keep on hearing about it the time I watch the, this video back, so it's...
Anyone else? Mrs. Billowitz?
Several meetings ago, I had asked a question relative to the audio tape of the fire department. And my, I haven't heard anything from the board because you said you'd let me know. My question to the board and my question to Mr. Gunter, do any of you know who has the original of that audio tape and who has any possession of that audio tape now?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. You know?
The lawyers have responded to Ms. Billowitz already on this topic.
What's that?
The lawyers have responded to Ms. Billowitz on this topic.
Oh, okay.
I posed that question to, um, one of the attorneys and I never got an answer, so I'm bringing the question directly to the board and to Mr. Gunter.
We're gonna just pass it back to the attorney's...
Okay, could you, Mr. Gunter, could you please give Brian Monigan a call and have him answer my question?
I will not.
And, uh, he has responded.
Okay.
Did he just say no?
I said no.
As a public service, you're never gonna call your lawyer?
It's, here's, this isn't legal, this isn't legal.
Once legal gets in, into things, we step back and the attorneys...
As a civilian, we're stuck having...
We're not gonna talk about it anymore.
With the lawyers, and now you guys, the lawyer works for you.
Did you hear that?
Your lawyer should be responding. I, I heard that, but I can't believe the things I'm hearing. And Bill Humphries, he's a criminal.
Sir, sir, we're gonna move on. Thank you.
I think I'm good, I appreciate your time, like I said, you guys had a Merry Christmas?
You as well. Department head reports. Here we go.
Okay, let's do some police reporting while we're here. Since the 25th of November, we've had eighty-one traffic, or traffic municipal violations, fifty-one written warnings, six parking violations, we did have a crash. The police department has done nineteen sets of civilian fingerprints. All total in that, in that time, we've done a hundred and seventy-nine calls for service in the community.
Action.
If, if anybody's been watching, any questions for, that's what I have for the police.
Anybody got anything to mitigate to the police?
Uh, if you've been watching the news, you see Granville's having a little, little trouble with their water system.
Whitehall.
Oh, I'm sorry, Whitehall, thank you. We did reach out to ask Whitehall if they needed some help. They said thank you, but they weren't ready to accept water from us. We did offer to transport some water, I guess Shaw's was trying to get some, some bottled water, but again, the bottled water didn't show up, so. We reached out, we offered, that's what we do. Uh, we want to thank Mr. Helm for, he donated a live Christmas tree to the town, which is currently up in the center of the park.
Which, Mr. Helm?
Bob. Bob, yeah. Uh, security cameras, that project is complete. I'm paying the last payment on that and, and they're working really well. The MERC grant, that is fully executed. I know the board is looking for a timeline on that project to, to heat and air condition this building, as well as do some envelope, you know, sealing the envelope of the, of the facility.
And for those people, when we speak in acronyms, MERC is Municipal Energy Resiliency Plan. It was to get our heating and everything upstairs.
The program is intended to make us a little bit more energy efficient. So I did reach out to Mr. Billings. He's gonna be here tomorrow with his electrician, we're gonna go through the building. He's gonna develop a plan and then he's gonna get back with me to give me a, just kind of a rough estimate. We do need to get a study from, study done, a Section 106 study for the state, since we've accepted state funds. They want to review and make sure we're not damaging our historic building.
That was the one?
The historic building. The historic nature of the building.
This building?
Yeah.
I think we lost the historic nature of this building when we put the fire department in there.
So we are on the National Register and in the National Register, it actually says, you know, they added the...
Okay.
Fires, yeah, that's, that's definitely a sore spot.
Can't win them all.
No. But yeah, I got Scott from Section 106 Associates, he's gonna come out, he's done these studies for us in the past, he can do it again. That's what I got for that one. The board gave me a whole bunch of homework at the last meeting, which I really appreciate. I did, I did, I did send the bill to the state. I sent it today and it's like, I figured they're just gonna shake their head at me, but, you know, it's, we'll see what happens.
What was that now? What was that?
The, the bill for the Green Mountain Mower Manor repairing the lines.
Oh, I forgot what it is.
The back water, back taxes, all the money it's costing the town.
Uh, Mr. Greeno, you asked about those signposts. I brought them actually here. I'm going to New Hampshire at the end of this week, I'm just gonna take them with me and return them. We're still working on that document for Sean down at Skyline. We still haven't heard back from him.
What's the holdup? Because it seems like...
We're waiting on the property owner.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but it seems like this is almost every meeting, we're still waiting on him, so is he not interested anymore? And are we wasting our time with this?
I don't think we're wasting time. We're just at the, at the mercy of Sean at this point and if he...
Right.
One minute he'll be booming and it'll be, is inevitably all done.
Okay.
But, I mean, it, it's kind of dragging the speed. Oh, do, do... No legitimate question, but...
I did provide a property, the delinquent tax report to the board, so I think it was in your package to see that. Sean Galvin, to Sean's point, I think we had a hundred and, I forget what the number was, a hundred something thousand in delinquent taxes.
Yeah, I got it.
Sixty, more than sixty of that is straight from the trailer park. So it looks, it looks remarkable, but it's really, it's, it's one property, it's really heating us up. I did reach out to some folks up north to try to help the, the people that are living at the trailer park, get out of the trailer park. Again, we can, I can ask what the nonprofits are gonna have to do there and...
It's like a hundred and forty thousand in back taxes.
For five years.
Five, for the last five years.
You see, the largest number is the most recent here. As we start sending out letters saying, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna start the process, people send the, send the cash in. So which is typical? Signposts we talked about. Oh, I talked to VLCT, our insurance company, about the Lumberjack Festival. As long as these folks, the people that are participating, are, are volunteers, they are covered as volunteers. So each, I think each individual is covered up to fifty thousand dollars.
Can we get a printout on that in writing?
Yes, I asked for an email, it hasn't shown up yet.
Okay.
That wasn't what they said before.
And it's not, it's, this is totally different because we went through this whole program before and we had, we gotten zero cooperation.
Sure.
So I just kind of wondering what's changed, that's why I wanted it in writing.
So the difference before was it was not our program, not our program.
So how do we document that?
Rec, rec department?
Yeah, we just, we just have...
Lumberjack Show or...
We have, we have Reese get together with, with Brad. Brad and, and he'll give them a list of names, that these are the volunteers working.
Yeah, and there's documents like, I am a volunteer, I promise not to sue you, I will be safe, you know, the, the standard template stuff, so...
They would be covered by the town insurance?
Because they would be volunteers for us. So that's where we're at with that, but they would have to sign the documents. I couldn't, I couldn't really, if they didn't come and actually just do the paperwork, I, I couldn't put somebody at risk like that. It'd be like, did you sign your paperwork? You have to leave if you haven't, or if you just refuse.
It's like a habitat for humanity if you went to work a project... It's like a habitat for humanity, if you went to work a project, sign, I'm, I'm volunteer, and I, I won't sue you if I hurt myself, help me.
Yeah.
It's that kind of thing.
But I will get the email, Mr. Greeno.
Good question, I may have just missed it, 'cause I missed the last meeting. The town is taking over the lumberjack shop?
We're not taking it over, we're letting, letting them volunteer through the town.
And saving them, it's over a thousand dollars in insurance that they have, that they have to, that they have to put up. Big, big deal, that you don't have to, and, and the town.
Change your sink.
Yeah.
That's awesome, that's really awesome, you guys, thank you.
Huge event for the town, great, great for our businesses on that particular day, and when we do it in July, it's...
Great job, great show.
It's, it is, so we, we need to support that.
Yes.
I agree.
It's unique.
It is, it is.
Last meeting, somebody mentioned Six Flags, donated those?
Yeah, the decorations, the secondhand.
Yeah, I, I poked around and looked for contacts, couldn't find anything, but I put Reese on the job, and he's reached out, so we'll find out what happens there. We asked about Moore's Auto, I had an email to fill, I don't have an update on Moore's Auto. But, you know, if they let their yards go to weeds, there's not a lot we can do about it. But when I find out, I'll reach out and get more information.
No more May?
No, no more every day. Just a quick update on our calendar, so today is the tenth. There's, there's no meeting on the twenty-fourth, which is Christmas Eve, we're gonna skip that meeting, which makes today your magic day to finalize your budget. We'll put it on the big screen to look at it. January seventh is, is the day we'll bring the, the clean copy of the budget with the revenues to the board, so that way they can review it one more time and then approve it.
You're an optimist.
And will the warnings?
You're an optimist, you are.
We're, we're, we're there already.
Optimist.
And, and then, I'm sorry.
Will the warnings also be on the seventh, that will be?
You'll get, you'll get a draft on the seventh, and then, uh, January sixteenth is the magic day to sign the warning.
Okay.
And one last thing, so the...
Close to the last day of petitions, the sixteenth. But yeah, the clerk could know better.
That is the final day of petitions.
It is the final day of petitions.
That's why we were able to, we can sign it that night, 'cause the doors are closed, petitions are no longer...
On the January?
January.
That's a Thursday?
It's a Thursday. We always have.
We, we come in just for, we come in for a special meeting, just to make it, make it all right, you know, all right.
And then the last thing, the, the state does, so we did that lead line inventory, and I'm sorry to take up so much time here. We did the lead line inventory in town, the state does have a loan program, did we talk about this last time?
Yeah, I think you did, but go ahead.
Yeah, the state has a loan program, they will loan us money that we will have to pay back. And we can loan this money out to residents, so that way they can do their line, but it's not free, right? 'Cause if we get the money, we gotta pay it back, so if we loan the money out...
I know this program's a headache, so we're, we're dealing with it down in Pontley.
Is that interest-free loan, interest-free loan?
The state, they're giving ten years, the federal government's like giving ten years, but they want it done like now, and there's no funding really available or hard to get. So municipalities are picking up the cost to investigate. We've got like a hundred connections that we're unsure of what they are, so we're trying to figure out how to...
Yes.
And how many lead lines is there?
One.
One?
They found one.
They found one lead line?
There's two hundred and something lines that either people didn't respond or didn't answer their door. So there's, there's two hundred lines that we don't know what they are, and that's gonna take further investigation. Which the state is providing actually a consultant to help us with this.
To A and E, is that?
Nope, it's actually a different, the state's retaining these people, so.
So the state will actually get access to their homes and check these lines?
I hope so.
I mean, outside faucet, turn it on and get your water sample.
Yeah, we're still working on that, and then it hasn't been, it has been tough, 'cause, you know. But that's what I got for you two, I guess.
Question for the DM? All right. Skyline purchase op, option, Skyline grant, I should say.
Yeah, I just, I put that as a placeholder, just in case, um, if something moved, I have no update on that.
Okay, basically, what's, what's happening is, the grant is to study Skyline and see what, what would be needed to reopen that plant, to sell to somebody, or to lease, long-term lease to some other company. It's not really Skyline, Skyline has no interest in doing that. But it, there are other companies that do the same thing, the idea is to have a place on this side of the state that builds, uh, that builds low-income house, housing, you know.
So you wanna turn it back into a manufacturing of a home?
Yeah.
Does Mr. Carrera own it with all the estate he has there?
Yeah.
So Dave owns it?
Dave owns it, Dave and Sean own it, and there would be, would be part of the, the partnership.
And they wanna sell?
Maybe.
Well...
Maybe.
He's got a lot of slate invested in that place, I, I don't know why he, if he bought it to put slate in, then you sell it, and he'll take it all out.
He's, he's got seventeen acres south of that, that he uses.
Yeah, I, yeah.
You know, and it, the, the idea is to, is to find out the viability of the building.
Okay.
And then we would put it, we wouldn't, the grantees and everything, the, the grant comes through us because we're the municipality.
The reason I was asking you, 'cause I see that, you know, possible purchase, I didn't know what you guys were gonna sell it for, or if you could have like ideas of like an Amazon warehouse?
Yeah.
Or something, I mean, they're always looking for buildings to put up, to be able to have a hub that can transfer their goods all over the area.
This is going through, um, an operation that wants to be able...
They want it, they just wanna know if it's for sale.
A manufacturing site.
Okay, that makes sense.
And it literally goes through the plant, the, the compressor's good, the air, you know, the dust collector's good.
No, no, I told you, I saw, see, being used for something other than sitting there rotting, you know, I mean, I go by it every day, it'd be nice to have some business here. 'Cause if you have it, it'll draw people here, and it'll draw business, and then it's air and it's money.
That's the theory.
I'm, I'm all for it, I trust whatever you guys are doing, and I'm just curious what it was, that's all.
That's what we're doing, and we're waiting, things move at a snail's pace, pace sometimes. All right, so that's that, crosswalk signage, new business.
So this is, this is the topic I messed up so bad at the last meeting.
Bad Joe.
Yeah. We got everybody all spun up, and said, well, maybe next time. So, so this time I brought some images, um, this is what we're thinking, there'd be a crosswalk sign with a...
Did you see any of it?
I didn't.
Do you have the ability to put the image?
I don't have the image on it.
Okay, no problem.
You can hit my copy.
All right, so, you wanna look at that?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse my reach.
You're not excused.
It'll be a crosswalk sign on a post with a, with a blinking light, and, you know, somebody comes up and they wanna cross the road, hit the button, it flashes, just to get everybody's attention.
Looks like they want it crossed from the hospital.
Yeah.
I used to drive for the bus, and I had the hospital room, and push that button, and it lights up like Christmas lights, you know, it's very noticeable. If you miss that, then you deserve to be arrested.
So the, the quote we received is, Jim was kind enough to get her a quote, it's nine thousand, sixty-nine dollars, eighty-five dollars per crosswalk. That comes to just under forty thousand dollars total for four crosswalks.
So this is, this is not the, this is the wrong one, then?
That's good, there's a little bit of contingency in there.
Okay.
So what, where, which, where the four crosswalks, just to see, get sure which ones are...
I got six units here. We were talking three at one point.
The unit, so this is, this quote was a different quote than what Jim gave me.
Okay.
His numbers are just slightly less than mine were, but the forty thousand still covers it.
So is the forty thousand of Jim's quote for three units, or for the six units that this quote says?
Forty, it's gonna be forty, a little more than forty thousand dollars to do four crosswalks.
So this one seems better than at the six. This one says six units, six sign.
That's, that's for signs.
Okay.
And that's probably, for each crosswalk, it's two?
Yeah, each crosswalk just has two, so it'd be double, so it's eight.
Thank you.
So crosswalks, I'm thinking, were the, the big one downtown, the one that takes your life in your hands?
Yeah, the Gauntlet.
The Gauntlet, the one right there on the corner by Cloud Nine.
Mm-hmm.
The one that cuts across from the other side of the road to the War Memorial.
Yep.
And then right in front of the school.
And then the school in itself?
I can add a few figures to that, if that'd be helpful. So every year, more than fifty thousand people are either killed or injured in a crosswalk incident. More than seventy-five percent of those incidents happen at dark, dusk, or dawn, makes sense, right? 'Cause low visibility. That number has increased in ten years by more than sixty percent. And that rate of increase is due to three main factors. Obviously, distracted drivers, texting, so forth. Secondly, more people than ever walk, for whatever reason, maybe for their health, maybe because gas is very expensive. Whatever the reason is, an exponentially higher amount of people are pedestrians than ever before. The third reason is because of the commercial areas. The commercial areas are the most highly trafficked areas, as it would make sense. And so that in tandem with the fact that more people than ever are working at night. Long gone is the day when people work from nine to five. It's almost eight o'clock, and here we are. And even though we might not be getting paid for this, we're here working, doing work for the community. So those variables have greatly increased the danger factor for people to simply walk across the street. And in my personal opinion, the way I evaluate my business, and also my personal way of going about the world, is the uftas and the noftas. The up for discussions and the not up for discussions. And frankly, if someone doesn't want to use the crosswalk, that's their prerogative. Good luck, Darwin, right? Otherwise, it's there as a means of safety for the citizens, the families of this community, and I do feel like it's a non-negotiable.
So af, sorry, so after the last discussion, I reached out to Joe, 'cause we were talking about, we had a hundred and thirty thousand approximately in the
Streets and sidewalks.
So I had Joe pull some numbers, so I asked him what the cost was for the section of veteran park that we did. So he said cement cost was like thirty-three and some change, and then labor's thirty-five hundred, so we're looking at about seven thousand total for our crew to do the sidewalk, right? He said the quote they got was like fourteen and some change, so we saved half of that by doing it ourselves. I also asked him if we had any plans on doing anything this coming year, and he said, not really yet, there's some stuff that he'd like us to discuss, and we can discuss that at a meeting. So we're sticking to the seven K figure, there's no way you're gonna burn through that hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in a year or two, that's, if you do a section a year of seven K, I mean, hopefully we replenish that. So to me, if we've got the money, and it's, we're like talking about forty, forty-one thousand or forty-two thousand, let's pull it out of the reserves, that's what we got there, so we're not gonna burn through that doing side rock repair anytime soon. And let's get these signs up.
Sounds like a motion.
It can be, so I make a motion, give me no more than...
Not to exceed...
Not to exceed forty-two.
Forty-two thousand dollars for...
Four crosswalks?
Four crosswalks. For signage.
No, I'll wait for the second, then I'm ready to discuss.
Yeah, I'll second that, but I wanna go to discussion.
I, I just, sounds, again, I, I like detail, so I have a lot more detail here, I'm feeling more comfortable with it. Then, I've got a quote of not to exceed forty-two, and it's gonna look something like this, or is it gonna look like the ones I'm looking at?
It will look mostly like that, the, the lights may be on the sign, or there may be a, a bar like that, but...
But there's not gonna be that grass median?
No, no, I'm...
Oh, no, I'm just talking to the sign, yeah.
I'm saying, I'm saying that the flashing, there'll be the flashing light, you push the button, the flashing lights.
To reiterate, the only, I have a problem with the crosswalks, I slow down for them, 'cause I know they're there. Um, the only issue I have is by the Cloud Nine, that one parking spot. If somebody's coming from the left across, there's a vehicle there, you cannot see them, and I'm very cautious about you there, and I've almost hit people before, not trying to, because you're going around, nobody's there, and then they come out, like, oh, then you lock it up.
The state doesn't...
Is there a way to, until these signs are up, get rid of that parking spot? Is there a way to get rid of that parking spot until those signs are up?
I, I promised somebody that I would cross that out, so I'm, I'm going to...
Oh, no, I see, I, I don't know, that's why I'm asking, because if that spot, parking spot was out there, nobody could park there, you could actually see somebody coming from the left as you're going south. So it just makes sense.
Bridge first, and then Rose?
Well, my, my issue is, I love this idea, and I love, I, I'm definitely for the signs, but are we gonna do this in-house, or are we gonna have a small contractor come in and do that?
No, it looks like it's just setting the posts in the ground, you know, attaching solar to it, putting on the button, so I think our guys can handle it.
Okay. But my, again, my issue is, we have so much on our plate, those guys do, I mean, we have ditches that haven't been cleaned. Uh, we had a brand-new cover on Scottsdale, the bank slid in and plugged into the cover, three years, and they still haven't got it done. We have to consider all this stuff, guys, we really do, we're shorthanded, just, just so you know.
I have, I have a thing to, to tell you, but I just wanted to, all the more reason, we really need to give those guys a, a hurrah, or whatever you wanna do, because they're, they're just kicking butt. So I told Joe this about a month ago, I was coming from work, it was a night about five after five. At the crosswalk by Cloud Nine, standing there, car this way, saw me, stopped, car this way, saw me, stopped, I crossed. My guardian angels tapped me on the shoulder, and I stopped dead, and it's a good thing, because otherwise I would've been dead. Guy passed the stopped car on the right. And literally didn't miss me by two feet. But karma, karma comes around, and did you, did you wind up billing him yet?
No, I'm still waiting for the report, but yeah, he's...
He took out the whole side passenger underside of his car, 'cause he ran over the new curb.
You could. Sorry.
And wound up sitting, waiting for the tow truck till six-thirty and, at night. My husband wanted to go to dinner at Lucy's, so I watched the whole thing, I did report it to the police, they did go to see him, did they give him a ticket, do you know?
I don't know if he said it loud.
That happened in front of one of my clients.
I think, I saw that.
Yes, I knew, I knew, yeah, yeah, it was, um, oh, from the school board there.
And, um, Janice?
Yes, Janice.
Janice.
Was it an older folk, and an, an older man and his woman sitting in a small car out in the garage, out in front of the...
Yes.
I went by it just after it happened, and I go, that's a odd place to be sitting, actually, no cop was behind them, I go, he wasn't sitting there for no reason.
So anyway, I believe that having the lights, maybe for, for some real hardcore cases, may not have any impact on it. But if somebody's just not paying attention, having the lights will make a huge difference.
I think the biggest thing, too, is a lot of people forget that you have to stop for pedestrians to crosswalk, 'cause it's state law, and I think a lot of people have forgotten that. And I don't know why.
There are just some towns that are more radical about it than other, if you go through, if you...
There are just some towns that are more radical about it than other. If you go through, if you go through Millbury and you, you don't stop. There will be, there'll be a bunch of people yelling that, you believe me?
Not to also mention, you have people who are, you know, compromised with hearing and vision. And that is a very real thing that they have to live with every day. Also, to your question Glenn, last time about getting more affirmation. So I spent a lot of time talking to more business owners in the last six days. Greg from Marble Mansion said he's a hundred percent on board. David Colby and I spoke for over an hour last night, and he said to tell you, quote unquote, "I'm an old man that has wanted this for years." Um, those are just two people. I could name an entire list, um, or present it as documentation if that would be helpful. But you have a lot of people in this community who I think are concerned for safety and would like to see this happen.
Yeah, my only other, my only other comment would be after, if we go ahead and put these together in and we'll be, we'll be able to see the results real, I think fairly quickly. The, the next question we should be asking ourselves, what other crosswalks are there issues that we look for? We can't fix everything at once. But for example, this, this
Right, like we talked about.
Crosswalks right in front of this building right here. There's, there's, and I, I think when you're trying to do with the kids going to school and everything.
I was just, as a coach to high school, I've waited and waited for the kids to cross and the cross traffic will not stop for them. I pulled my truck out, stopped, and made people stop so the kids can cross to go up to their houses, up the side streets. I mean, it should be automatically, these, new lights should be mandatory in front of the grade school and high school, I think. That's just my personal opinion, it's a tax plan. I think it should be mandatory in front of the schools. Those should be the first two you do probably. Well, other than the one where we almost get ten every day, I'm sorry. So then there's your four right there.
Right, like Rich said, like, you know, like said, one a year or whatever, you know?
But we're gonna, we're signed on for four.
Right.
Let's do
And we'll get a chance
Two credible ones down, down, for two schools. And then every year, pick a way out.
Because you might wanna fine tune the type of sign or whatever. You're, you're gonna learn something from one way or another.
Okay, to interrupt, will this start this year? Well, in twenty-twenty-five, or is it a springtime project, or is it winter time project, or?
I'm thinking it's gonna be a spring project.
Spring.
I'll talk to Public Works and see if what they can do.
And it has a lot to do with availability.
Yeah, I totally understand. I mean, the way you guys
If it's, if it's an open season, a lot of that stuff can be done now.
Right. If we can get this done, you know, that's the big deal. So there's a motion on the floor. Is there any other pertinent discussion?
Not to prolong the discussion.
Too late.
Just, yeah, I'm gonna do it. So like when we talked about the one-way, um, uh, in front of Jamassie's. The question I always, that I have to think of is, well, what's the problem we're solving? How many accidents have we had? How many people have been hurt? And I can't say. I mean, we had a close call, but how
Well, the near misses are enough.
Right.
I, I've always been clipped too. I'm just, okay, I, I just wanna toss it out there that one line saved is great, I'm just, just to help that kid.
I mean, this, this town is a racetrack. I mean, you can, I can sit in my house pretty much any time of day and I can hear tires squealing. I can hear people speeding up and down Fourth Street, like
Come off cemetery street.
It's terrible.
Sign gathered in by ways, it's a
We have a small police force and they're doing all they can, but people do not respect speed limits in this town. They don't respect stop signs. I've watched people blow through. Tonight, I watched somebody were going down the bus garage to get my wife's car, on the bus by Stewart's. Chelsea's coming, you know, to the stop, car's coming off North Main. Doesn't even stop, blows right through because they didn't wanna sit there for the bus. She's like, you won't believe how many times people do that. And he, and he, and then he flipped her off. He flipped her off.
Yep. They hit the stop sign and they pop.
Yep.
We need some traffic.
The lights, the lights will be great, but that's next year. What you could do right now is take that by Cloud Nine, take that parking.
Yeah, put up no parking.
Although standing there and I can't see him, I could never see a kid.
Yeah, how hard to sign up, no parking and eliminate it.
Yeah.
Then we just gotta take it off the ordinance, right? If it's on the ordinance.
Which would be fine.
Okay.
What would you put there?
So let's get back to the, the, the motion on the floor, folks. We're kind of
Yep.
So the, the
The aim of the motion
I'm so sorry.
And taking from reserves
Yes.
Is to get it done sooner rather than later.
Yes.
That's right.
Okay. And we are discussing reserve funds for the twenty-sixth budget tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
So maybe we can add a one or two back in, but that's a different, different argument, but it, it's a sure one to think about. So, okay, raise your vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for the legwork.
Appreciate you very much.
Thanks for giving me those numbers, Joe.
Downtown designation. Um, the, the planning commission has started that process. There are a few interesting details with that. One of them one of them, and the major, I think will be the major hurdle is to come up with a um, downtown association. It can be called whatever you wanna call it. Um, but there needs to be a, a designated committee. Uh, can be public officials, but it has to be business officials, business people. It has to be an operating facility, or an oper- operating committee. It has to have a budget. And I'm still waiting, I'm waiting for the Rotten Regional to tell me that we could, at least in the interim, get, go through the, the EDC.
EDC's budget and year marks and money that says, here's the budget.
So, so like your EDC budget, we, maybe we add a thousand dollars to it or something like that to, uh, to facilitate this, this, um, committee. But we have to have the committee to make that downtown designation fly. To remind everybody that downtown, that downtown designation is one of two basic tenants to get, um, Act Two-Fifty relief, not exemptions, but Act Two-Fifty relief for developable parts of, of the community. So we, we do the, the downtown designation and we do subdivision rules for, for those developments. And we have, we get an automatic, uh, Act Two-Fifty, uh, we can get an Act Two-Fifty um, relief, we, as far as a half mile from wherever we consider the center of our, our downtown designation. So, um, there's some, there's some leeway that, that the state and the, and planning commission will do um, in terms of where that center is and where the half mile is. So we did it the middle of town, or say the park, for instance, if that was the middle of our downtown designation. A lot of what's south of us would be on the river, which we're not gonna develop anyways. So we may wanna move it a little north. It, it's a, it's a juggling act, but the, the, the first things we've gotta do is, um, is get that committee. That's gonna be, that's gonna involve volunteers, which are few and far between. Um, to begin with, and that's why I thought the EDC would be a, a place. Because there are committed volunteers there, and without too much trouble, without too much expense, we could add to your budget. I'm just waiting to see, I'm waiting to hear if that's gonna, if that's cool. I mean, the state, and you said something that you would already heard that
Well, I mean, that committee, I was just talking with me and Bob a little bit about about three years ago, I looked at downtown designation. The real hangup for a lot of towns was that one of the requirements was having an architect on that group. And not every town has an architect that you can go up and tap. And they were, they showed some flexibility, I, I in, in, in that. So I'm going, geez, that's good. The question would be, we could get them a budget as part of the EDC, but would I'd be curious when you're talking to the folks you're working with to say, is that like a subcommittee working from the EDC? Or, because it makes a difference to the folks who are giving the money out. Or is it a, a, they're tied in, but they're really, if you're looking at an org chart, that the same uh, they have the same, because we as the EDC, we, we can recommend spending money, but because we, we, we don't, we can't spend money without the board approving it. I, I just wanna make sure it might be, is it, is it okay to have as, as a subcommittee? Or does it need to be
A separate thing.
A separate one that we just fund.
The one thing about the architect, I didn't understand what you were saying before, but now I, uh, if we had a, if we had instead of the planning commission, if we had a, um, and we can do this, but I recommend against it, and the planning commission would recommend against having a
Development review board.
Development review board. And I, I think that, that opens another whole can of worms up that
I, I, well, I think that one also, right, gets to if we could get a group, and we're getting closer, especially what make it sound like they love chamber of congresses, they love businesses and
They want, they want a representative group.
So whether, rather than a subcommittee of the EDC, why don't we just realign EDC to be the Economic Development and Downtown Committee?
That, that's, that may work.
When I
And I'm waiting for
Three years ago when I asked about, about that, because I said, we have standing economic development committee, why don't we be that right there? They said, absolutely not. You can't. A lot of municipalities ask about that. This has to be a separate group.
Yeah.
And they, they gave some other logic, but I'm scratching my head saying, if they've, over time, are loosening up a little bit on the architect, maybe it's worth asking the question again to say, I think you got the right makeup.
Well, we got the
And we've got
Is it possible to just rename it?
That's what, that's what
That's what I think. Then instead of, instead of an economic development committee, it's whatever you wanna call it. The Fairhaven Downtown.
Right.
Uh, Twenty.
Right, well, well, I mean Some of the other towns call it a partnership. Um, you know, it's like the Polley Partnership or, you know, whatever, I mean, Fairhaven.
I think right when that's how they got their downtown partnership.
Yes.
To tell the truth, to meet their downtown requirements. So if we wanna call it the, the Fairhaven Downtown Partnership, I don't care what you call it, economic development committee or downtown partnership, if you're doing, to your point.
The basic, yeah, the same, it is exactly the same.
It's like a duck.
The basic, what the state's looking for now, which they may have lightened up a lot since you talked to them, is because all they're looking for is a group of people who are committed to, um, developing the downtown. Now, the, it doesn't mean that you're not just working for the downtown, it just means that that's the primary focus.
Right, and using your half mile downtown, I would, I, I would see how far the limits were. Downtown would include the Olavishaw's building and the
Well, that's
Up in the, up in the mall. If you put it, I mean, that's where the growth, to your point about whether you're gonna go south or not.
The state is a broad, is a broad, uh, proposal, has, has a, has a circle, a half mile out. But the planning commission has already said that that circle could be elongated and, and so, and the other end of the story is if, if the center of, if the center of downtown becomes this, this, for instance, then this is just, you know, spitballing. Um, if this becomes the center, half mile from here gives you another several hundred yards that way, and that may get us, there are, there's a lot of available property on the other side to root for, and that's kind of a target for housing, you know, the proposals that you had. And, um, you know, so, so there's a lot on the table, but the, the, the basics are, we gotta come up with a committee. If you guys are open to at least hearing that proposal when we get the okay, then that's where we start.
I, I think we should, even if we get, like, someone from the planning commission and the person who's working with the Rotten Regional come to economic development meeting and, and we work, yeah.
And Greg and David are both coming to our next meeting on the seventh. Um, I think it's a great idea. Um, I think that certainly the, the charm, the beauty, the focal point is the park and the historic downtown area. It's not that there's not other commerce, obviously, in the town, but if there's a person looking to spend some money, to visit the town, visit the area, that's where at least they're gonna start.
Yeah, oh, yeah, and the, the, the basic, the basic, um, focus of this is to get that relief from Act Two-Fifty for developers. And that saves them hundreds of thousands of dollars. And the most developable property is north and south and, you know, by, by the, uh, old, um, racetrack and things like that. So we're stretching the half mile a little bit, but they seem to be, they seem to be open to that so far.
Great idea, great idea.
We'll see.
If we were to rename and basically because the renaming lose the economic development committee, would we lose anything, any particular grants, any particular, um, opportunity for grants or anything like that if we were to rename it?
I'm not sure, but I think we'd probably expand the possibilities. That's my guess. It just seems you're giving it another, another, um, you know, you're calling it the, um, the Fairhaven Partnership, or whatever you call it. Fairhaven Forward, I like that one. But, uh,
It is pretty good.
Um, it, it's just another opportunity to say, we're this and this.
I just didn't know if somewhere in the depths of the state, in all their red tape, that they would say, you don't have an economic development committee, so we're not going to help you with this.
Oh, no. I, I, they're not looking for that. They're looking, the, the big deal is housing. We, we're, we're, I don't know what, what the number is now. Um, I heard a
Twenty thousand short, something like that?
In a year. It's like thirteen thousand dwellings a year we're short for what we have now in the state. And the state really wants us to have another hundred thousand people in, in, in the state. To, to do the work that we already have here, already. So, so, you know, that's not thirteen thousand, that's three times, four times that, five times that. So, um,
Well, and like for instance, you know, you probably all already know this, but like where Finders Keepers was, all of that above it, you know, is residential housing that isn't to code, that he's, that's not rentable and not rented. And it's just sitting there, and, you know, I can't afford to go in there and do, I don't even know what those costs would be, but it's it's really upsetting to see such a beautiful building with housing opportunity plus commercial space.
That was like, my parents were, uh, crap house, was my parents owned that back in the early two thousands, and when I bought it, you walked upstairs and it was like you're stepping back in the early nineteen hundreds. And had, had touched, you know, old wood stoves in there and the old mailboxes. You literally walked into
Right.
You know, back.
And that's, that's another whole discussion that downtown development would help with. I mean, the, the, the whole opera house thing.
Right.
And spread that out to the apartments next to it and, you know. It, the opportunity is there, we just gotta, we gotta dance the right dance at this point.
Good.
All right, so that's where we're at, and maybe next meeting I'll have an answer to the the EDC, and then, and then we'll ask, then there'll be a big ask. Okay, uh, budget review. Uh, we are starting with accounting.
I'm gonna pull it up on the big screen, okay.
And, would you mind taking over for a minute while I use the bathroom?
Who's here? Do you have our first one up?
Um, well, I have this, uh, would you mind offering if we, if we jump down to benefits real quick? I, I think this will be pertinent for the conversation. I think this will be pertinent for the conversation.
Absolutely.
And it will help us with our budget, with our budgeting process, so.
What's now?
On page.
Twelve.
Thank you.
So under benefits, we, we did get the, um, the actual renewal cost in from VLCT. Was it Tuesday? It came in, it must have been Friday, um, and it came in less than what we were anticipating. I know, that's exciting.
It was good news here, folks, we saved money.
Yeah, we, we, we cut our costs, so what I'm, what I'm asking the board to do is to move our workers' comp insurance from sixty-one six down to fifty-seven thousand, from property casualty from eighty-eight four down to eighty thousand.
Where are you? You're, you're on O one O ninety-seven.
It's all the way down at the bottom, yeah.
Forty-eight, zero one.
Yep.
And zero two.
Yep.
So it's sixty-one and eighty-eight.
Are you going to change here?
It's already changed here.
No, I'm, no, I'm changing from sixty-one to fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. I like that.
I'm asking, I'm not, I don't want to presume anything.
No, go ahead.
And then from eighty-eight to eighty.
So you're saving us twelve thousand dollars?
Yeah, we're still going.
We'll take the twelve thousand dollars, we're going to pay for those new lights.
And then just below that, the HRA fees, um, our five-year average for HRA is forty-three thousand, we did have a couple of high years, um, I feel confident to move forty-eight down to forty-three, we do have some, we have had some younger staff come on board.
Forty-three?
H R.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'd like to move that down to forty-three thousand.
Yeah.
And then this will show us what our current increase is.
We're doing, we're expecting benefits because the foundation with some information that Joe got from VLCT, and he's been talking about the last three, forty-eight, oh, one, two, and seven.
How many employees does this cover?
Um, for what, workers' comp?
No, benefits.
Employees with benefits.
What, I don't understand the question.
Waters, who, how many people, ABW Waters?
So VLCT, yeah, VLCT doesn't, doesn't cover healthcare, this is our property casualty, workers' comp. What else is in?
No, I, I, I understand that, I'm just, I'm talking about the entire budgetary O one O nine, ninety-seven hundred.
Right, how many people get benefits from, under this in the account? Approximately, it's, it's.
So, again, so property casualty, I mean, that's not, it doesn't cover people, but I normally get like twenty-two full-time, plus in the summertime we have a bunch of part-time.
Okay, you know, we have. I'm just trying to think of like a, a per-person figure at the end of the day.
Yeah.
You know, like a, more like a general blanket versus individual?
Well, it's, like FICA med is, your FICA med is stuck in there, right, your, your taxes, so the seventy-two thousand is not, I can't say that that covers somebody, it's not, it's not an insurance, but it's, it's there. It's not working for me.
So at the end of the day, those three line items that you have there, is that roughly seventeen thousand dollars that we can, uh, that helps us get where we, it brings the, the budget that we're looking at trying to keep, uh, pretty reasonable, it takes, these seventeen thousand dollars we thought were in there, that is, out? Again, as we start talking to folks, there's things like reserve discussion we're going to have, well, if we get seventeen thousand, we're able to save here without changing the overall increase, we might get a little.
Understand one thing about the HRA, the union contract which you're involved in will, will expect what we always have, which is a hundred percent coverage of, of theirs. The difference is what Joe's showing you, um, just so, if you go too low.
Right.
Then, then you're in trouble, there's a, there's a certain percentage is probably, probably, um, not, shouldn't be, shouldn't be spoken right now because it's probably going to be part of the union negotiation, but there's, you just got to, it's, it's a rule.
Understand that, right, because you can see how big the actual has changed here, and, and what we, so when you take that average and say you want to change it, you can see the swings that it took, in fiscal year twenty-three compared to fiscal year twenty-four.
The big point about having younger, younger people on is, is important, that is true.
We, we had a lot of retirement twenty-two, twenty-three too, so people were getting their, you know, taking advantage of their healthcare before they left.
Yeah, so, so is everybody comfortable with taking that seventeen thousand with three, on those three items?
I, I think it can be, I, I.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I'm good.
No, I'm, I'm going to pass the baton back to you, we jumped, we jumped out of the order.
I was thinking it was more like OJT.
No, 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 go ahead.
So we're talking about thirteen thousand dollars, that's what you're talking about.
About seventeen thousand is what we're at, right, you have fifteen, you got five, twelve thousand?
Twelve thousand, I don't know, two thousand.
Just keep throwing numbers in, I'm, I'm getting dizzy.
No, no.
I do have one question, sorry, this is, I'm skipping as well, but did you say in the last one that the transfer station was losing money?
It's, it doesn't break even yet, it all, it's always, it's not a money loss, it's cost to doing business.
This is probably going to get me in a lot of trouble, but I've thought about it, I use the transfer station, um, so again, I'm probably going to get in a lot of trouble, but I feel like two dollars is the deal of the century, like, most transfer stations charge a lot more, and it's an option, it's not a requirement, people have other ways that they can have a trash service come to their house, and it's exponentially more expensive, so, as a person who uses the transfer station, my fee would go up, but I believe that it would be reasonable to increase to like one dollar maybe, I know it wouldn't put a lot in that, but I believe that the town is a business, so the positives should outweigh the negatives, and that dollar per trash bag increase, instead of paying twenty dollars, you pay thirty dollars, is very, very reasonable and could maybe put you in the, in the plus for that, I don't know.
The only, I'm, I'm all for, are, what do we do differently? I'm a little hesitant, you know how we've been, Joe, you were looking at possibly having haulers and charging them and doing other things, I, I don't, I don't want to do a little, one here, one there, I'd rather have it an approach of, of if we're going to change the, what we're going to do for hauling, let's, let's, let's talk about that, also want to, want to set the tone for talking about that, but that's also, they've seen from the minutes in our past meetings that we've talked about, do we have other towns use our transfer station, and, and we charge, saying, I'm all for charging more, I want to charge more to people who aren't taxpayers in Fairhaven, quite, quite frankly, if I can't do that and make it, make it solvent, then I'll, I'll increase, but at the end of the day, this is going to, don't have our heads up on me, at the end of the day, I don't care if we don't make money, I just want to break even.
What?
The whole idea, the whole idea on, that's what I'm saying, this is the big one, but I, I, the whole idea at the end of it should be that we, we put that amount of money in and we cover our expenses and, and we're not having to burden taxpayers on the.
Well, to that point though, I mean, bringing trash from other towns are going to increase the environmental disposal needs within this town. Secondly, you know, breaking even, I mean, on one hand is fine, on the other hand, those guys could use an upgrade for the, the place that they, that you give your punch tickets, I don't even know what you call that hut.
I wish it was down by the, I wish it was at, by the speed, honestly, I wish it was like right there.
It doesn't give them a pay raise, it doesn't give them an upgrade, you know, it's just, I think that it's a valuable thing for this community, I use it every week and I, I appreciate it so much, um, and I personally would be, like sometimes a little bit, it's okay, we don't feel it as much, if, okay, I can do that because it's a great service, instead of getting kind of like hit hard with something, a big increase in something, sometimes that.
I appreciate the discussion, um, but perhaps, um, we can talk about changing fees when we're done with our budget?
Right.
Because right now we're, there's a lot of.
We've already done the transfer, I, I don't want to re, re, we, we owe it now, good discussion and good stuff to talk about.
Make sure you get petition tomorrow.
About that, I don't want to pay more.
And I'll say one more thing just because I, um, the leading cynic in town when we first started to charge, said to me, think about this, Bob, charge a dollar for a bag of trash, cost a dollar for a quart of beer, what are they going to do? Buy the beer and drive the back roads and throw their, throw their garbage out. So that's the leading cynic, and I'm kind of weirded by that theory that if we go too high, even, it's not, you're, you're right, it's not too high, it's not too high at all, it's, it's.
But it's to stop the sofas and the bags of garbage on the, on the side road, because you've made it.
You're right about, we've already kind of, we can revisit that, and I, I don't, I don't think we're overcharging, so where the hell am I on laws here?
You got Joe trying to, trying to get another one more point.
Not, not a point about that, um, there was one more reduction under health insurance, the one ninety-six there, um, we had, because of staff changes, we can take, we can remove about ten thousand out of that, if the board so wishes.
Let's hope.
Let's, let's, let's take, what's that, what's the, what's the new number?
The new number is going to be one eight six four nine two.
But that's just because somebody isn't taking the insurance or, which that could change.
A couple of people left, as you said, and that's.
So that's getting, as pretty much continually adding that together, we're up about twenty-seven thousand right now with that, ten grand you said you were going to take?
Not twenty, like twenty-three, because the two before was like thirteen, just over thirteen.
So, so right now as the budget stands, you're at two point one, two point nine one percent increase, so that gives you a little bit of breathing room.
Two point nine one, did you say?
So for.
Twelve thousand?
Okay.
All right. Seventeen thousand, it was, it was twenty-seven, it was twenty-seven, you didn't get the last line item. I'm cheap, I, I, every penny, I want to know here, let's go.
I, I think it's important to note too, for folks who've never sat in on a budget meeting, or for folks maybe watching, uh, our, our approach, rather than building a budget and then going through reductions to get to a, a palatable figure, we, we bring out bare bones, what does it cost to keep the town running, and then what are the other needs that we have to consider, we add on after we're done with this process, so.
Right, so it's kind of a zero budget, kind of, zero base.
No, sir, I'm, I'm done interrupting.
No, that's good news, you got any more good news, you saved money, you promise?
You want to go back to accounting now, or?
Yeah.
Okay. So, salary's up two thousand. Anybody got any problem with that? Speak now or forever hold your peace.
How can you have, excuse me, I'm sorry.
What?
Well, how can you have zero for office supplies, I don't understand.
For accounting?
Yeah.
They're probably using the same supplies that we bought for Eileen and Joe.
Talking about that same.
So, the beach don't need their own number to change, are you using a pool of supplies for everyone, so you're paying for it someplace.
Okay.
We buy a new, we buy a new copier, everybody's using that, so we're not spitting.
They get no supplies, they use an abacus, it's.
Jock board, we, oh no, we've gotten modern, it's a.
Typewriter.
I remember my grandfather's editing machine.
Yeah, there you go, you got to have the eye shades to go with that. Okay, uh, debt management is kind of what it is, I would imagine, but that's the reduction to, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, we're, we're paying off a little bit of debt for the few things, so, one more payment, and then we're going to button that one, excuse me, button that one up too. How many years of the sewer bond?
Thirty. So, we'll need another one before.
Yep, twenty-seven, you'll, you'll be the only one.
I will probably not see the next one, but, yeah.
It's like every twenty years you have to upgrade the plant, so your bond exceeds what your current upgrade is.
So, yeah, okay, uh, reserve allocations, funding games are coming.
We're starting to go through that down, don't we?
Okay. Just keeping in mind that twenty-seven thousand, and when I, when I started, so I want to spend a little money here.
We're, we're in a good spot on reappraising, you know?
One hundred and forty-five down, are we? The RP, did we, did we, we should know pretty much.
Are we or are we?
Are we in a good place?
No, we're in a good spot, there is.
I know there's a substantial amount.
There's a substantial amount.
Unless, unless appraisals have gone up more than what they were given other towns for doing appraisals, sound, look like we had the right money, that we're in good shape for reappraisal, if they come back and think.
Is that a recent calculation of, huh?
Well, last, just a year ago, year, a year and a half ago, Castleton went out and got a quote, and we've got enough money to cover what they paid, if they haven't.
Ours would be, should be less.
And they have twice, twice as many offers to reappraise, so if it, if it's greater, I think we've got to go resubmit that bid out again to go, I, I think we look good to say.
Now, the question I have is, did Castleton do any of theirs in-house?
I don't, I don't know detail.
The last time we did a reappraisal, which was a million years ago, the, we only contracted for the commercial, commercial, and the rest was done in-house, I am not sure that our people are, are prepared for, nor did we budget for that in there.
No, there, they won't do anything in-house, um, the state and the repricing companies are shying away from letting the local listeners touch it, so it sounds like the.
I'm not, I'm not against that, it's just that it's, I just want to make sure that we have that.
Didn't we have an appraisal like two thousand four, two thousand five?
Yeah, because it was not five years, not quite five years after we bought our house.
I do believe we had one for that.
And that, that two hundred and fifty-five, that looks like the thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars we have for reappraisal, is a pretty solid number, I, I.
Okay, well, let's, let's hope so, and let's wait for our, our quotes to come back.
Do you want, if, if we start under reserve allocations, under O one O, and that seventy-nine hundred public works vehicle and equipment, didn't we, when we had public works in here, we put twelve, we cut them back in some areas, and we told them we put in reserve, and that's that twelve, is that, that's that twelve thousand I'm looking at on the front line? I just wanted to make sure that, that we knew, last year we had nothing, and we were saying, hey, let's put, let's put twelve thousand there this year. I just wanted to make sure that, that we knew, last year we had nothing and we were saying, hey, let's put, let's put twelve thousand there this year. Everyone comfortable with that? And so here, we're going through again on that. If we go to the next.
Is this number include the twelve?
I, I go to the next one, which is oh one oh, uh, seventy-nine zero one. That's the police vehicles and equipment that was zero last year. I want to propose that we put five thousand. I know we were doing ten thousand prior to stopping, we got into COVID, we said, hey, we gotta cut some money back somewhere. But, uh, it looked like the, uh, police have in their capital reserves. I bet you get it out of a handout, but it was.
You updated one as the one.
Yeah, I want to use the updated one, definitely, I, I don't want to get bad information. Thirty-four thousand, thirty-one there is already in there. So we start putting, the chief's been fantastic about you getting used cruisers and getting great deals. But sooner or later, I gotta believe our luck's gonna run out and we might have to get a new, new cruiser. And then with thirty-four, we put five thousand in there, we restarted and we can work next year.
Everybody okay with that, five thousand?
Is that enough?
No.
With, well, it's not enough to buy, we have thirty-four thousand.
For your start for this year.
We have thirty-four thousand in there already when we stopped, that we haven't used. So if you put that five thousand with it, you're just under forty thousand, so I'm.
That should be in the ballpark of a new, they're pretty close to a new.
I think we're.
And he does, he does a pretty good job of getting used.
And, and.
He's, he's real good at that. And, you know, so we're looking at maybe twenty, twenty-five.
We, we may.
With a decent, with a decent years.
And next year, when we do the budget, it'd be easier to take the five K and move it to ten and jump right up to ten. From not having anything there, is my thought process. The next line item underneath that, uh, oh one oh seventy-nine oh two, for fire vehicles and equipment. Even though it was seven thousand five hundred, I'm recommending we put ten K there. You know how they were talking, that, that brush truck to replace and.
So the only thing is, so when we had the auditor and there's those accounts that they're talking about, we have to reallocate. Where are we at on those that he?
When you, when you look at that, is that, uh, your reserve funds that?
Are those a separate list?
It would be under, um, um, well, no, it isn't, they are assigned, I was gonna say it's unencumbered, but it's not.
So there's, when we were going through the, just a very quick fix, when we were going through the last budget, um, we'd ask the auditor, you know, what do we do with these small amounts of money? The fourth street sidewalk has two thousand dollars in an account. Shouldn't have an account of two thousand dollars in those. Consolidate this money, so Ron, the auditor, is gonna consolidate those funds. Um, we're gonna have to wait until after the audit is done and the audit won't be done until the end of March. So there's, there's really not a chance to use that money now.
Right, and they can't get on a ballot for March, like we're kind of.
Hoping for the brush truck and everything.
Okay.
The, the, the timing's not.
Cause I know we talked about, we brought up when they talked about that as a same.
So we're not gonna put the brush truck on a ballot this year?
You can if you want.
Well, we don't see what he's saying is, we would put it there.
I thought that was part of our discussion, that we were, we're gonna do that.
It was.
What I'm saying, Mr. Greeno, is that there was a discussion of using old reserve funds to offset that cost and that is not possible right now. It won't be possible in March.
We, we don't know what the, what we can put on the ballot right now is the problem, because we don't know what the number is, right?
Uh, you can put it on the ballot.
We can put the, we can, but do we know what the cost is?
Jim would have to provide a cost, which will be eye opening.
Um, I'm gonna will be.
I think, I.
Not being facetious, it's.
I think we got, I don't think we have a choice, we have to do it, really do.
Well, we have to do a lot of things, but can we afford a lot of things, you know, that's, we have, so is there, is there a compromise in there somewhere?
You know, the fire company is very important.
Well, I get that, but can, can they live another year with, with that brush that they got? I know they said no. And I'm.
I think part of the, part of the issue was their downsizing the truck that they're gonna get in anticipation of upsizing this for people.
Right, right.
Yeah, they kinda gotta go hand in hand. Now, it looks to me like if you're talking, we're gonna put this on the side burner, we're gonna be shorthanded on the other end.
Here, here's what I'm.
Getting people to a fire.
I'm hoping, I'm, I'm just a little hesitant saying, spending money, I don't know how much I have. The auditor is supposed to be doing the twenty-four audit to tell us, be able to tell us that. And I thought he was coming back in January to talk to us about, about how he was progressing, now when he, when we last had him on.
So say we get this in Mount in March, there's nothing we could do like a special election with that reserve right, at any time of the year, right? Realistically, we out.
Danny would kill us, but yeah.
We could.
Right, but you could.
And you don't need to use those funds.
But, but if we.
You can just buy it.
If we can buy a bus, if we put ten grand in the budget. And the new truck comes, we, we find the truck we want, we don't have quite, worst case scenario, that ten grand will make a payment till we do sort out the reserve money. It'll make payments, it doesn't stop you from buying a truck that gets you the transportation, it's just the.
Where are we finishing up this last year's audit?
Fiscal year twenty? Fiscal, so twenty-three, we talked about, twenty-four, it has to be done by March, the end of March. And we've scheduled next week for another meeting with them, they were here on Friday.
So we gotta do our homework and look what there is, there, there's possibly, there's possibly some unencumbered funds. As there always is on a budget, the surplus, whatever you call it. No, there always is.
There's, there's a little bit.
Okay.
He's recommended against using that mu, that money. And to buy a brush truck, I mean, it's, they said, what, a hundred thousand? That, it makes me, it makes me so nervous to touch those unencumbered funds.
But he is telling us to, to reallocate them though, right?
This is different.
How high?
Every, every year, there's a little bit of money left over that didn't get spent.
Right, that didn't get spent and then you.
Or we had a little higher revenue.
To put it so on.
So between the two, there's, you know, the, the DPW is generally in the eighty thousand dollar range and, and the, um, and, uh, the general fund is a little bit more, but not necessarily a lot more. It's, it's kind of like, it's kind of like checkbook money, you know? You know, it's, it's there, it's nice to have it as a, as a fallback. But there's some, sometimes if there's enough, you can, you can ask the taxpayers to spend it on something. I, I wouldn't spend it on paying down the taxes, cause then the next year, you gotta make that money out of it. But if you're, if it's a one time, it's more reasonable than ask. So that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, we, we think, and again, I'm not proposing this right, just yet, but I'm just saying, you're looking to get on the March ballot with something that says, cause I, uh, to the effect, I thought we were talking fifty, sixty thousand. For the truck when we had the original conversation.
Let's talk to Jim again.
Right, but, but I'm, and I'm saying, if you take, put ten thousand in for vehicles and equipment here. And if you said, if you asked the voters if, that, uh, would they support, uh, not to exceed fifty thousand, uh, of, uh.
Well, yeah.
Unen, unencumbered, I don't know what the verbiage would be.
That's not the right term.
Uh, no, uh, but it, of reserve funds to reallocate some reserve funds from one to another to, not to exceed fifty thousand, to be used for the purchase of a, of a.
Alright.
Fire truck. We could, I think we, would that get us there, but I'm still, I don't know if we're putting a cart before the horse.
Let's talk to Jim, but let, I think the ten thousand is reasonable.
I definitely want to, because if all else fails, you put ten grand in there, we get it after July one, we can use that money for making payments.
I think he's got some bigger to have, brush truck.
I'm sure, I'm sure he does. They can probably.
I'm sure he's got figures for the next two trucks. It's pretty good.
They just don't want us to get.
We did talk about it.
Call it, I know we did.
Kind of say, yeah.
And we said we were gonna take reserve, we thought we'd take reserve funds and, and we, we, we do it, there's no question, we, we said that. The problem, it sounds like we got into is, uh, not real sure what that dollar amounts, so that we can put a not to exceed number out there.
Is that, is that fire equipment number correct at this point?
That's what's there, but they spent a bunch of that money to buy a new fire truck.
Right, that's what I was wanting to say.
There's like a thousand dollars there.
So there isn't seven thousand five hundred there, or, or there's?
No, 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 I mean on this reserve fund.
There's, it says two thirty-seven.
Yeah.
But they spent most, they bought packs and then they have cash to buy the new fire truck. There's only like a thousand something.
Okay, that's what I thought, that's what I thought, okay. Okay, so it's gotta show that we have it, but we've already committed it.
Yeah, that's the money that the, the reports show.
Yep.
That's the new truck, so we're basically starting.
From scratch.
Okay.
But the ten, but the ten grand, I'm, uh, I'm back again, the ten grand starts us to where, because if it's not, and even once we get the.
Like you said, even that covers some payments.
We're gonna have other, other vehicles we have to replace, we have to start putting.
Yep. Okay, so is everybody okay with the ten?
Yep.
Okay.
So just, uh, as a heads up, that puts you at three and a half percent increase.
Okay.
With what you've just put in the budget.
And then, and.
Three point four.
And you've already given us credit for the other money that, okay. Um, reappraisal, we talked quite a bit and we're good.
Um, streets and sidewalks, we, we're asking for, we're asking ten, or we're taking, we're not.
I would keep it right there at ten grand.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that.
We, we put it there saying, cause once we get, uh, uh, we really wanna put a plan.
There's no proposal for that. For streets and sidewalks at this point.
Right.
So it would be, you're, you're saying, keep it.
Keep it the ten grand that we put, we only had one reserve account that we gave money to last year and it was streets and sidewalks. I think the same argument, without beating it to death, we still need to put money in for streets and sidewalks.
Yep. Okay, so what do you want to put in there?
So let's just keep the ten grand that's.
There isn't ten grand.
Oh, I'm.
Carrying it from the last couple of fiscal years.
Budget fiscal year twenty-five. Ten, okay.
You just took forty out of it, so.
You took. That, that needs to be ten thousand. Oh, I thought the ten thousand was, uh, the budget fiscal year twenty-five.
Oh, ten grand, um, by the way, we've, we've spent year twenty-three. We, we had twenty-seven, right?
Right, and I still have, I, I still have one more I wanna.
Okay.
Throw at you, so, uh, then we'll see where it is, then we might have to come back.
Okay, so it's ten, at this point, we're adding ten.
I want streets and sidewalks for ten grand again, cause I just took it for granted, it was there.
He doesn't get, he doesn't get to choose, you guys can speak.
No, you can, you can just say, stop. I'm looking to get some in there and then when you see the total amount, say, okay, you wanna cut back, but here's putting reserve accounts back on the burner.
Alright, uh, municipal, is that zero?
Yeah, and you know how I said I wanted to spend twenty-five grand? I originally wanted to put ten grand, I crossed it out.
Where?
Uh, for municipal building.
Mm-hmm.
And looking at the fact I, I'm, that the streets and sidewalks is the ten grand I would, I would normally put for municipal building. I think I'm gonna not recommend the ten grand right now, because let us get the mer, money and, and do the project and it may be next year that we start. We, we can't do it all, so I'm throwing out at you.
I would suggest, and I don't see it as a line either, but I see it on our green sheet here, that I would, uh, I would suggest the five thousand in recreation park maintenance.
Yep, I, I did add that, there wasn't a line on the budget, but I did add one in, so there's.
So, so what's the park restoration and tree?
That's, that's the main.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let's go down line by line.
I see.
So, cause, so we're all talking about the same thing at the same time. I'm easily confused.
Okay.
So at this point, nothing at municipal.
No.
Nothing at transfer.
Well, I'm, before, he jumped in, but I, I went, if we're gonna take an order under oh one oh seventy-nine point oh six, I put ten grand there for consideration. If you looked at the, they need the cement thing with the side and the à la carte thing that they were looking for, but I mean, even though we have put a, a new backhoe, but I think part of the document we had was they were, they were looking for that roll-off with the cement to do a better job, so they could clean that up. We don't have any money.
I, I had ten on that one as well.
Transfer station said it had seven thousand nine hundred in there. If I, rather than ten, because the parks and that, you wanted five grand? I, I would say that with what we're spending, what if we take five grand for transfer station, so we can put it with the seven nine and that will get us fixed? It's in five grand for the parks and then we see what that number comes out to and we've done a pretty good job of taking the first pass.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah. Five grand with the parks.
Yeah, five grand with the park and five grand with the transfer. What does that big number come out to, just for?
So parks is not, oh, there it is, okay.
It's a new, it's a new line, uh, well, they, he put on this one up here, you may not have on yours, recreation and park maintenance fund. Uh, which is different than park restoration and tree.
Okay, so, okay, so you've got separate.
Yeah, I, I added.
He added a line to the budget.
Alright, I'm good with that.
What is that, you want to put me in shock with the new percentage increase?
So we started at two and a half.
Yeah.
And we're up at over four, we're at four point oh six, four point one percent, Ron.
Four point one percent?
And what's inflation at this point, three something?
Yeah, it's a three, it's a three.
Boy.
You're gonna have to cut. Cut all, you're gonna have to cut that much out to get back to two.
How much will I have to take out to get back to three?
Everything you just added in?
No, no, I wanna, I wanna get back.
Thirty-five thousand.
I wanna get back to something like three, I, I wanna get back to something like three eight, three nine. What do I have to take out? I want it to be under four percent.
So you, you can want, so that line, the park restoration and tree prep, what is that?
If you take two thousand out, it gets you to three seven.
If you take ten thousand out, it gets you to three seven?
Yeah.
That's a terrible way to budget.
I, well, I'm.
It's a terrible way to budget.
So what do you need, what can you live without? Not, what percentage?
I can live without the, the.
My question is.
Park money that we just put in, because when, if, if, we'll be talking about it in, in the à la carte stuff, but there isn't a thing on that that, uh, that couldn't be done by, by private fundraising, other work. When we put the recreation department in, we put them in not saying we're gonna pay for everything. We went from thirty-three thousand dollar budget to eighty-seven thousand. And what I heard from them was, they would, they would work and do things like, where, that would raise money to do some of the stuff here. So we still, it's nice if we can, but quite frankly, I'm okay with taking that five thousand, the one for the five thousand we just put into the transfer station. I'd take that, if, if you're talking, getting this back to.
That is.
Three thousand, I take, there's nice to do, these are not, you're making the, some of these things sound like you gotta have them.
Well, it's not gotta have them, but.
So another thing too, not to, so new town garage, I mean, our town garage is in terrible shape, I mean, we should be putting some more money in to replacing that. I mean, that's a neat, you can't fit the equipment in there, it's, I mean.
But you gotta bomb, there's no way you're gonna be, a ten thousand here, a ten thousand there, you're gonna bomb the garage when you do it. You can't afford, the reason I'm not trying to put money there is I'm saying, T-shirt, you talk about inflating your budget and you'll still be going out asking the taxpayers to bond you. I mean, it just costs that much to put it, it's not that it is important, I'm just saying, can't get there from this.
So then my other thing is, so the new, the parking right here, the, the garden, do we have anything in reserve or an account to garden that, to take care of that next year, this spring?
It's just under maintenance, Infest is taking care of it.
Okay.
And if, and if people, and again, I look at those and say, that shouldn't be something the taxpayers should be doing all the time anyway, there's enough people in here. We'll go out and buy some flowers and put some flowers in and thing, just like they do in other places.
We put that in as a municipality, it's our responsibility to make sure that stays prettier. We're pretty much proving people's point that we put it in, spent this money and we're wanting it to go to shit, basically.
Wait, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying that when you do beautification projects, they should, they should also, they shouldn't be something that you do an overburden on, on the taxpayer. There, there's, there's groups that get together and, and will fundraise. There, there's, there's groups that get together and, and will fundraise, and I think, quite frankly, I miss the Fair Haven that used to do more fundraising for, for things that were out there, because you owned it, you had skin in the game.
Well, the, the problem.
Problem is people have to work more.
You're just shifting the taxes. You're just shifting the taxes to the business people and, and ambitious volunteers.
And like you said, you can't even find volunteers to do anything.
Ever, go talk to, go talk to, go talk to Mary here, Mary, Mary. And ask her how many people come to her and want just a hundred dollar gift certificate, or just a fifty dollar gift certificate. It happens all around the town.
Yeah.
But from everybody, from the cheerleaders, to the football team, to the town of Fair Haven, because we won't budget it here.
I'm saying we can spare, spend outrageous money to have a flower center, come and plant flowers, or we can have people with their own gardens bring flowers and put them down there, why wouldn't you do that?
I.
Cause you're relying on, something that you're relying on.
There's some reason they don't stop at the stop sign.
I'm, I'm worried, I'm not so worried about that as I am, um, the rec, the rec department.
Well, the, I, and, well, I'm worried, I'm worried about the rec department and the rec committee that said they were gonna do certain things, like fundraising and everything. I've seen Reese fundraise, I'd like to see a little more for the items I saw, all three of the items I saw in there should be something, there should be some, some, some fundraising going on from the rec committee.
Well, I don't want, I don't wanna waste all my time, I, I get it, I know what you're saying.
The idea by adding that to the reserve account isn't to hit their à la carte items. The idea is, stuff over time with parks and rec will break down, and if we don't have money in place, we're going to have to put that in eventually, cause eventually we won't have the same crew that's helping out with the rec committee.
Mm-hmm, it'll go, it'll go south again, I, I don't disagree, I'm just saying, how much am I, how much are you willing to spend on your taxes? How much of an increase do you want? And I know I sound like a broken record, but I'm gonna tell you one more time, our budget passed by three votes, and we're asking, are pretty good, this, this increase, once you get appropriations and, and.
Appropriations are nothing we can, that's not us.
It's all, at the end of the day, that I still get taxed.
Well, I know, but it's, we can't be blamed for that, is what I'm saying, so we can't control that.
That's correct.
So, just, just thinking of everybody's arguments here. I pretty much agree with the rec. It's, it's important. Yes, they gotta do some more fundraising, they were gonna do, uh, signage and sponsorships and all that, which I think they are doing somewhat of a decent job. And I'm sure in the spring it'll start back up again.
Mm-hmm.
What if we cut that, uh, to three thousand, save two thousand there? And then what if we take the ten thousand, uh, above that for?
Streets and sidewalks.
Streets and sidewalks.
Streets and sidewalks.
What if we drop that down, say, to seven?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Just for, for this year.
Yeah.
And then that, that should bring us down under four percent.
Yeah.
I think, I think it'll help a lot.
Okay.
I think it's kind of a balance between two problems, you know?
If I can add on to that, I totally, I fully agree with you, and also what Bob said, a lot of the businesses are tapped repeatedly and repeatedly, but I do believe in the fundraising, like an Oktoberfest for the fire department, that could be the entire month of October, there's a ton of things we could do in the park to, to highlight that and generate it for the whole month, which is another meeting, I understand. But you could also put a QR code down at the entrance to the Parks and Rec site, and ask people if they just say, do you love the park if you'd like to donate? And also out by the dog park, I use both of those all the time, I would be more than happy. Because then you're not specifically saying, give me money or pay me money, but if you appreciate this, because a lot of times in my experience, people will. People will because they do appreciate it, and the beautification, the churches, adopt a pot, you know? You have tons of churches, we have tons of church, churches in this town that are highly organized and efficient. And so, you know, adopt a, a pot, or a plot, or an area, and just, that's your area to beautify.
It's a great idea.
A lot of the people I've talked with in town really believe in the reserve accounts. People would be, the people I've spoken with would be more amenable to say, let's put, let's put a couple thousand dollars a year into the reserves, you know, into each of the reserves account, than to, when it comes to the time where we can bond out the garage, the town garage, we have, we build a new garage. We have less to bond out, and people appreciate that. So, I, I mean, I'm, I don't know, I just, I remember when Skip Cook had the school, he had the, the three main reserve accounts, and people had absolutely no problem, do it, do it, do it. For the roof, for the, the transportation, and I think the boiler was the other one. Everybody was so much in favor of it. Reserve accounts make sense. I just think, the more you can put into the reserve accounts, the better off the town will be in the long run. And I think people would, can understand putting a little bit away now, so we don't have to borrow as much in the future. Just an observation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we do have a proposal to go, um, seven thousand at streets and sidewalks and three thousand at parks, is that where, wait, yeah, parks. Um, where's everybody at that?
I'm good with that, it gets closer back to.
Something.
That's a, it's something.
It is, it's just, it's just down to three point nine, is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah, three, three point nine.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, anything else in reserve?
No. And then, my last comment on reserve accounts, sometimes it's fundamentally, are you coming from the same place, or what do you think a reserve account is there for? My, and sometimes, my definition of reserve account is, that's for the emergency, the, uh, something out of the ordinary. When I look at a reserve account, sick, and I know, because I heard from the last meeting, and Mayor Richard says, what are you doing with that money in there? Spend it. And I'm saying, with me, when I look at a reserve account, like, and for the parks and recreation folks, I want money in a reserve account, so if the mower that's mowing our fields was an engine, I can get a mower. That's, to me, that's something, that's something that's immediate, we need, and we're not going out, so. Sometimes, I'm not saying my view is, is right or wrong, I'm just saying, sometimes we're not all on the same page for, what is the reserve account for? Is it a temporary resting place for money that we're gonna spend, and every time we need money for something, we, we look over, let's see if we, if we can take that. I, I look at reserve accounts as saying, here's a capital plan, something that I think we, sometimes we do better than others. Fire department, cause I see him sitting here, they have multiple pieces of equipment. They put a capital plan together that says, this one, you know, you're gonna get so much light, and you're gonna have to replace it here. Better start putting some money aside for, they've been a dozen paper, whole thing happens over here.
Right.
So it's different than our emergency.
Well, when, true, it's, but I also see that something totally, we, the capital account, reserve accounts are, are set up, which is probably capital plans, even as good as we are at planning, sometimes there's something we don't perceive. That's where the emergency piece for me, it is kinda nice to have something there. And maybe it's looking at it the wrong way, but I'm just telling you when I make my comments, I base it on that for myself. So, that's it.
We also have the funds policy. And we are way off on our funds policy in terms of how much we want.
Oh, sure.
In each account. I recall the budget before I joined the board, I think the question of the year was always, is it gonna be twenty thousand we put in this reserve account, or ten thousand?
Mm-hmm.
It was not, hey, should we put, you know, a few thousand or nothing? So we, we've kind of lost our, I don't wanna say we lost our way with that, but I think COVID had a, a pretty big impact on that, in trying to, to keep, uh, combat inflation, combat COVID, but, uh, yeah, we need to, this is a decent starting point, we'll definitely next year too.
Yeah, I agree, more, more discussion around the, the mid-max levels and, and, because some of them were just our best guess, too, we, we just.
Yep, the other thing that I would ask is, emergency reserve that we have, what's, where's that stand now? It's not on this, cause that's another, that's another, uh, thank you. We're never near where the account wants, that's for sure, but the emergency account has three hundred and fifty-three thousand, thank you.
And that is for emergencies, yes, consider a, a.
But emergency is, is, I'd be beholden to. I mean, it's for, there was a catastrophic problem here, like we ran out of water or something, but, but, um, you know.
No, 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 no.
But, I, no, I'm, you know, sorry.
Yeah, don't put that out in the universe, no, no, no.
But anyways, that's something we, we ought, we have a fallback on too, as well. So, we're at seven and three there, um, five thousand at the transfer, uh, fire vehicles is ten. Question for you guys, I know why you're here, talking about a brush truck, how much is a brush truck gonna cost?
You know, the basic breakdown is, we did some, when we were here before, Jef and I were here, had quotes, uh, replace the truck, the base chassis, nothing on it was between fifty-five and sixty, that's a gas chassis, four-door, one-ton chassis, uh, more than adequate for what we need. Then you figure a body's gonna be somewhere between five and eight, let's call it five to ten. Uh, that's just like an aluminum body, you replace like the, the black one that's on it now. Then you add, you know, compartmentation and a skid unit, I mean, you're probably, we, would you figure out seventy-five to eighty?
Yeah.
Now would be more of a, it's not going to Bob Richards Rescue Vehicles, hey, build us a truck, cause that would be, you know, a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand, we don't need that. This is more, right, this would be more a very adequate truck to fill what we need, if we have to help with some of the design and stuff like that, it's not gonna have a pump that's already built into the chassis that you have to, you know, work on, or make sure the systems work together, I think that's what kind of the number we look at.
We've also been looking at the secondhand market.
Right.
And probably every one or two a month, we're starting to see a kind of a regular thing with some turnover, a lot of rigs out of Pennsylvania, we've been seeing.
Yeah.
And a turnkey, like mid, like two thousand and five, two thousand and six vintage, eleven to fifteen thousand miles, body that will serve our purpose, skid load that would serve our purpose, four-door chassis, summer diesel, summer gas, it's an automatic transmission, so the youngins can drive it. And they been running sixty-five to eighty-five turnkey, and you're ready to, all you gotta do is re-later it, and you're ready to go. So, that's.
One yesterday that would have been perfect, um, a little light on water, it was six, two thousand and fourteen, um, with fourteen thousand miles on it, I think.
Yeah, had the diesel, it had the diesel, I mean, you wouldn't pay for that on a new one, but it goes on a used truck.
But that was sixty thousand dollars sold in one day.
One day.
That would have been ideal, but, you know.
But the point is, they do come along, and that's like the third or fourth one that we've seen in the last couple of months that would, would fit our slot. And there's a couple of, uh, of dealers that, used truck dealers that, that these are cycling through. And, you know, our position is if we can get a funding source established and a budget, then we could say, okay, something comes along, this is what we're looking for, and we could snag it within a day, something that comes along.
And if we could find one for sixty instead of eighty, you'd save twenty thousand.
We're all for that.
And if we're in, if we're hitting the, you know, per late, um, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we're still twenty.
Yeah, we're gonna nine.
Ten, twelve years newer than what we got.
Right.
Is there any value in the current brush truck?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
What's, what's the proximate, I mean, I know truck market's gone insane with value, so.
It's a slow mile.
And it's standard.
There's, there's.
Is that a diesel or gas?
That's a gas standard. There's the overall, you hear, oh, I want my brush truck, you know, it, it comes down to, and you guys either put it out in Auctions International, or you put it on bid, or make offers. I don't wanna put a number on that, but if I was just gonna guess at something, ten, twenty, somewhere in there.
It has value, yeah.
So, and maybe more to the right person because of what it is, it may not be worth that, I just, I mean, not to, you know, just take a town truck with a dump body, okay, this doesn't have a dump body that's at its last little bit of its life cycle, rust, et cetera, and all that, you know, that still was in that, what, ten to fifteen thousand range, so kinda put that into this one with low miles. It, it's a quirk market, it might be the right guy that's sitting in Oklahoma, like, oh, I like that truck, I had one like that, I can't find that anymore, cause it's a nineteen ninety-five. And, oh, I want that, you know, I want, and the checkbook opens more, so I don't know, you know, you have to kinda, we have to broaden our scope, and there's nothing saying we can't use that truck back into those cycles of those, uh, brokers that globalize that market better for us, no different than the ETA, one we're replacing the other big truck, that's got value, you know, I mean, some places are taking the bigger, like the ETA, packaging it and sending it overseas, because in their market, that's a brand-new truck, you know, I mean, it's better to have some fire coverage for your little village than nothing, you know? So, but I, I would think honestly, somewhere in that seventy to eighty thousand would be a very solid place to be, if we come in last week. You know, we're taxpayers, we don't wanna overdo it either, you know, we're not coming to you, like, you know, Bob and I were kidding around, but like, you can spend two hundred and fifty thousand on a brush truck and do nothing to the right manufacturer, we don't need that. So, we're trying to be fair and equitable, you guys have been very good about working with us as well, so I hope that answers your question, or can spin the cycle?
There's several different proposals, um, one, one is to put it on the ballot as a separate line item.
Should be fine.
And, and we need to know a closer number, um, eighty-four.
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 If, if the fire department's confident eighty, we can put it at the, as a not to exceed on the ballot, say, hey, eighty thousand dollars, and if they don't spend it, then.
Yeah, we, you know, we're going to lose for saving money. So, the thought I had when we talked about that, that one day, if you're gonna write it that way, to replace the brush truck, not to, don't put in there for you to buy a new one, because that pigeon holds you into buying a brand-new truck, if we get that opportunity, hey, could, you guys kinda, we get the footwork laid down, we know we've got a while for that other truck that we're doing a sister project with, it won't be here until, you know, next fall, winter.
Right, this time next year.
But we can start laying that idea in there, cause there's places in New Jersey, New York City, there's contacts that we have, that some of these people, I, I guess, I don't know if you call it philanthropy or whatever, but they would maybe like normally put their truck out there for X amount, like, well, you guys kinda, they're need, they're very affluent, you can have it for this. And if we can do that, why not, you know, you, there's those opportunities, but you gotta have, you gotta have a nest egg to know what you can do. And I think voting, if it takes the pressure off you, I think it's a very good idea, because look at our truck, it went very highly well-supported, and I think our community supports us very well, it doesn't make me nervous at all doing that, whatever's gonna work for Joe would, this like, would be the best way to make it work.
If I could make a suggestion on the funding, um, maybe, maybe make a ballot item to deposit the eighty thousand into the fire, fire vehicles and equipment fund. That way you'll have the cash sitting in a fund, and then when you find a good deal.
Yep.
Boom, you can go buy it, instead of having to find a loan, or find some funding source. And then if they're under the eighty thousand, they still have that money sitting in reserve for their equipment.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Good.
Equitable to us, I believe, unless that's something, whatever's, you know, you guys are being very good about, like you say, working with us, and we're trying to be good with you, and we're on an uptick, which I've, we brought up before, tonight, we had, do you have ten, or, what do you have on your roster?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
I would have been twelve, but I had a P E meeting, and two of them are out, otherwise they're sick, that's what we had in the training last night, and they were all doing air pack training. You know, we're, we're coming, we're getting there, the hard work is paying off, so.
Our numbers are up, and. Our numbers are up, and it's a matter of getting these guys motivated and trained, they're young, they're aggressive, we gotta get them up to snuff on their skills, but the department's on the upswing, manpower-wise.
Last two mutual aid calls, we left, we went on, we left people at the station.
So we have full trucks.
Yep.
So that's part of why this plan's so key too, because the truck we are replacing now, we're left with five people on it. So this new brush truck with, with those other people being there, and off we go, we can go to work, and it works both ways too, because when our mutual aid partners come over here to help us, they're bringing manpower.
Make sure the chief is at the town meeting.
Usually am.
Yep.
Anything else you guys have for us, or?
Go Christmas.
I don't know. Maybe Santa will bring us one.
Rumor has it Santa will be in town, uh, next, or Saturday, uh, evening.
Saturday night, Santa will be using his firehouse.
This coming Saturday?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, it will be somewhere in that four or five range, Santa himself has not given us his full itinerary of departure time.
He's a busy guy.
But it will be in the process. All good with us?
Yes.
Thank you, guys, if you need something else or if it doesn't make sense, we'll know.
Appreciate you guys.
Alright, have a good night.
Thank you.
Hi Dad, I'm going to take you there tomorrow.
Alright.
Thank you.
That helps, I believe, um.
Can I make another suggestion?
Sure.
Uh, if we're gonna put a ballot item for eighty thousand for a fire truck, we'd make that ballot item ninety thousand. Um, and take that ten thousand out of that budget.
Take the ten thousand out of the, uh, reserve fund, make it ninety thousand for them to vote on, and it helps bring our three-point-nine, what does that do for?
Depends on if you're gonna take that.
Huh?
Three-point-five.
Brings us to three-point-five.
Oh, three-point, almost three-point-six.
Three-point-six, but I mean, it's a.
I'm good with that.
I, I, we're gonna get, I, we went to zeros on reserve funds for, during the COVID times, and we've only got one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
See you later.
We brought one back last year, we've done quite a bit this year with adding to that, next year we'll be definitely putting something.
I think starting small, keeping them going, they add up over time, I think it's the best way to go.
Okay, alright, so all at heart.
So is this what Sean brought up, asking for these organizations to petition them?
Appropriations.
Yeah, so. Where are we, could we, that, how do we do that, can we do that for this year, make them petition or no, or we have to do something next year?
No, the appropriate, they went, they actually got it voted last year that they don't have to do a petition until twenty twenty-nine.
Who did that?
Are, are you talking the appropriations now?
Yeah, no, yeah.
And the rescue squad?
No, everything.
Everything, Sean brought up like, I think when I first started.
Oh.
Back in March, asking why these.
Again.
Organizations don't petition the voters.
In order for us to change that, we have an appropriations policy that spells out, we'd have to look at that, that policy, change it, probably wouldn't we have to warn you?
Uh, it's a policy, it's a policy, we just have, we would just change it, I think it's too late to change it this year.
I, I think it's.
I, I think they all should get petitions with the exception of the library.
Why would it be too late to petition it this year?
Because it's only, there's only.
People, my, my opinion is people use the November election to get their signatures and everything, to tell them this late in the game to go out there and, and get signatures. I feel like I really, I, I dealt from the bottom of the deck, I, I would wanna give it more time.
I mean, I don't think it's, I don't think it's unfair to, uh, point out, for instance, and I think Sean's a great point man for that, uh, that. We're sending money to the regional, um, rescue squad on top of, on top of paying money for the Fairhaven Rescue Squad, Fairhaven. So, I don't think it's, and if anybody wants to speak up, it, see, the problem is, is not many people go to the town meeting anymore, and not many people know. That appropriations adds two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars or better.
Three-hundred and fifty thousand dollars of appropriations, and again, and when, but when you start, I don't, I'm, I'm.
A hundred thou, a hundred thousand was the library.
Again, and you're right, which could be in our budget, whatever. It's, the, the problem, uh, is if we're, it's okay if we wanna talk about changing something for next year, then I support it, because this March, when everyone goes to vote, people are there getting. They, whenever you get large groups of people, you know they're a registered voter and they're there voting, and you just ask them to sign your, your requests, that's why they use like the. Uh, I, I don't have a problem of going back out there, the logic, I hear the emotion of these people coming back and getting it all the time, and I keep saying, it doesn't matter. Uh, back when they had to do it, everyone voted yes every time on everything. So, so after the COVID was over, the reason, we said, they've been voting yes for the last fifteen years for these. Uh, I mean, uh, I, I think you made the comment earlier, sometimes we're, we're a solution looking for a problem to solve, which, which the problem we're solving, uh, at the end of the day. When you start things like rescue squad, I disagree with Sean, I have no problem with paying, uh, Rutland Regional Ambulance that small amount of money, because they, they come over, they loaned us their ambulance. They forget that they loaned an ambulance to the Fairhaven Rescue Squad when they needed it, they, they, they help in, in, in meeting them on the highway. Plus, if you were to go and check, if you were to go and check in every town around here what they pay for their rescue squad, it's a fraction of what we pay. For our Fairhaven Rescue Squad, which is a private business, it's getting close to two-hundred thousand dollars. To me, they're almost getting to the point where I'd be, I'd be coming in here saying, why aren't we talking about a couple full-time E M T firefighters in here, because we're paying the same money? We might as, and I, we might as well have the coverage, I, I, so when you start talking about, I got a problem with Rutland Regional. It's a small little piece of money, and quite frankly, I see Rutland Regional doing as much as ours, you have a different feeling about the rescue squad. I think, I think our rescue squad does a great job, but I think if you were to look and see what other municipalities pay for rescue squads, it's a fraction of what we pay in this town.
Yeah, and, and, uh. I think.
I just.
My opinion, my opinion, a lot of people in this town think that Fairhaven Rescue Squad is part of the town.
It's part of the town, and they're all volunteers, it's not.
It, I know that.
Private business.
Uh, but maybe it should be part of the town, and maybe should have a handle on it better than this.
I, I, I look, if we're trying, we, we're busting our tails to keep a three-and-a-half percent increase, and the rescue squad is probably gonna come out with over a six percent increase. And, and I, I didn't see any better service than I, than I'm seeing right all along, and I'm not saying I don't appreciate them, I do, but I'm going, quite frankly, I. I think other municipalities do a heck of a lot better at managing their rescue squad than we do in Fairhaven, that's me.
Just as a point, or, just as a point. Several of the surrounding towns' rescue squads are almost defunct, and what has been happening is Fairhaven has been having to pick up the slack.
That's correct.
And we're giving free emergency services for surrounding towns, absolutely.
Well, I'm, obviously, they get.
Mutual.
Yeah, it's the mutual aid thing, but at the same time, you're, you're looking like Potley is almost defunct, Skansboro is almost defunct. Um, what was the other one he mentioned?
And they bailed us out.
I'm not saying they're not, I'm just saying.
In the old days, I mean, when, when Fairhaven was not a good trade.
I'm just saying that you're particularly mentioning how, you know, the other towns are only paying a little bit.
Eight-hundred thousand to five-hundred, fifty thousand dollars.
Compared to what we're paying.
Compared to close to two-hundred thousand dollars.
But we have a viable, we have a viable group there, whereas these other towns, you don't know.
I, I have a private ambulance service, it's no different in my mind than in all these ambulances, it used to be a private ambulance service, it's not a volunteer people.
And regional.
From here, and when I, when I see my ambulance service taking, buying houses and, and do, I, I know, I'll get off my.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask it, cause it doesn't have anything to do with all.
Nothing to do with this budget.
Nothing to do with this budget. Nothing to do with this budget, it's just.
Nothing that you control.
I, I, I would, I would throw that, because you're right, the appropriations, it'll get voted in by vast majority of the people who just voted yes for the appropriation anyway.
You had something to, you wanted to?
I just wanted to make a point that a lot of time spent on the number that we have no control.
We have no control whatsoever, I, I agree, that's the frustration.
So all at heart.
Alligator.
Um, I don't know, he sees that, uh.
We addressed some of them.
Uh, appropriations. I missed it, put it all on appropriation.
Tell, tell the groups that are asking what they want to fill out an appro, get their signatures and fill out an appropriations request.
Yeah, so this guy here, it's like Chad brought up earlier, we really do, when we do the budget, we really whittle, whittle it down to only the stuff we, we need to operate the town. These are more like the, it'd be nice if we could improve the town kind of things. Um, part of that was, since I had somebody talk to me today about Christmas trees, why is our Christmas tree so small, they ask me every year? Well, there's a twenty-foot Christmas tree, pre-lit, fifteen thousand bucks, so if the town would like to have, you know, a big next Christmas tree, that would be about the cost.
No.
What is the cost of a real tree that runs about twenty feet? There are a lot, there are a lot of people donating like to the Rockefeller Center, those people like donate the tree to them.
Yeah.
Like every year, they like, oh, take my tree for Rockefeller Tree, like.
Yeah, the family up in. Here in Vermont donated a tree this up at the church street this year.
So, lighting for the playground, ten grand, these are all, um. Lighting for the, the walking trail construction is ten grand, storage container for the playground, that's all, all wrecked. Anybody got any ideas or?
My recommendation is we don't, we, we already addressed, uh, a little bit of money in, in reserve account for the three, first three items are all playground recreation. And the rest, uh, let them, let them fundraise, or go get signatures and go up and do an appropriation request, like everyone else.
Yep.
Does when they don't like, when they don't get their money.
Does anybody have any idea what size the storage container was they put on here for six thousand?
That's the, like the ones down at the, we rent one, we've been renting that forty-eight footer, um, every year since I've been here, we could have bought three of these things by now.
That's a, that's not a forty-eight footer down there that you rented?
I think it is.
No, it isn't, it's either a forty or a twenty.
It's about a twenty footer.
Twenty footer, twenty footer.
Yeah.
So a twenty-foot.
Okay, and I priced one of these last year for four grand.
Hmm.
Okay, so I just don't know if it's gone up that much or a lot.
I looked at one, yeah, it was forty-four, yeah.
Okay.
But, the other. I mean, that's, that's, we've got one down there, right, or is it them?
So we, we really, since I've been here, we've been renting that container, and I forget what the cost per month is, but it's so much that we should have bought two of them.
Eighty bucks?
No, it was more, but we could have bought two of them.
We were getting screwed.
Yeah, well, well, the guy down, the new guy down here donated one this year, but for as much as we were paying, we could have bought, we could have bought two of them.
Is the storage container a long-term solution for our needs down at that?
Well, it's waterproof.
Yeah, but I, I think I know where you're going, if the building burned down that used to store.
I'm serious.
Yeah, you need a wrecked building.
You know, yeah, I think the long-term hope is some sort of multipurpose building where concessions could raise some funds, storage could be had, and. Do, you used to have a building like that?
Yeah, burnt down, and it got washed out, and FEMA won't let us build it unless we build it like a pyramid on a mound. You know, so, I mean, I, it, it, it gets expensive very quickly, I mean, that's the problem, but we do need something eventually, but where's the money coming from? I mean, I don't know, I mean, that's why I like the storage container, because it is waterproof, and it, the occasional floods we have down there would survive, the equipment would survive, which it didn't in the building that we had before.
I mean, have you seen some of the things the military does with storage containers, they retrofit them into pretty much anything you can think of, shower trailers.
Yeah, yeah.
Housing, I mean.
I was just gonna say apartment.
Washing dryers.
Right, laundry rooms, I mean, bathhouse in Afghanistan was a trailer, storage trailer, there is dorms that I didn't live in, I lived in a tent, but. They have converted into house, people built houses out of them, there's one on thirty that's been converting into a tiny home, like. See, there's, you could buy a storage container, and who say you couldn't retrofit it to be your concession stand and storage.
You could do a concession stand at one end, storage in the other.
You get a forty-four footer, half storage, and then, how much room do you really need for concession stand?
That, that's a really good idea.
You can, right?
Well, but, well, then, then we're not building, right, it's a container, and.
It's movable, yeah.
Yeah, it's movable, so that's, that's, that's a really good idea.
Right, what, what would the, what would the.
Put a table.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea, that's a good solution.
Right?
Couple of shelves in there?
I mean, ser, it's, it's not undoable, I mean, literally the military or private contractors have been doing it forever, and people are building houses out of these shipping, can, you go online and. People are literally retrofitting these containers into houses, cause it's cheaper.
They have great floors.
They're very, they're not that hard to retrofit, so your investment, you know, say even if you spent thirty thousand dollars on it, you're not gonna build a building for that, forty-foot building.
I agree. Still, let's back that up, I think the consensus is we back those three items out, is that what I was hearing, except for the, this last discussion?
It's, it's duly noted that there, there's, there's things that we could do if we had extra money, I just don't know if we have any extra money.
Or, the town buy the container and ask, we got a lot of business, or construction companies and contractors in town, hey, come help retrofit this.
Or, or, cause I'm still looking, instead of spending town tax money, we, we take, our first project for the playground committee is to do fundraising for a four-thousand-dollar trail.
Get the big one, what's?
Or get whatever, whatever.
Yeah, get the big one.
And, and, and let's, uh, and that doesn't mean that we couldn't, uh.
Can you ask the guy down there just what a four-thousand, or a forty footer would be? So we have something.
But I'm saying, give and take, right, so if we made the initial investment on the, the trailer, and then, then you fundraised or had the parks department, erect department fundraise.
Well, we have.
To convert it.
We have three thousand in the budget in the reserve account right now, but we could, we took ten thousand out, we could maybe add another couple thousand.
But that, like I said, is movable, you can, I think that's your best bet, and get something down there, and you can do pretty much whatever you want.
I'm not putting any more in reserve account this year.
But, well, we, we took some out, don't forget.
I, I understand.
If we want the rec department to raise some money, this is.
Let's, uh, let's revisit this one, cause we're kind of talking in circles of what we're gonna do here, so, let's find out what the number would, would be, and maybe we can figure a way to get it in. The next one is a small enclosed trailer for water tools, that seems like that would be the water and sewer budget, wouldn't it?
Um, no, that's actually, uh, Public Works would like to have a small, cause we got rid of that van, cause it wouldn't pass inspection anymore. So they'd like to have something that they can store their tools in, and that way when they do have, you know, a, a water vein break or a water line break, they don't, they don't have to worry about going back and forth, like, oh, we forgot this, oh, we forgot that, let's grab this. So they want to just have something.
Maybe we buy them some Prevagen.
Prevagen?
It's the stuff for.
Oh, forgetful.
For memory. Okay, I'm being facetious, it's getting late. Um, what's your pleasure, folks?
I, I don't support. I don't support any of the a la cartes right now. That's me.
My thing is, so, like you said, Rich hits on this all the time. I feel like our DPWs stretch thin. I feel like your Water Department and your Sewer Department need to start picking up on their end of things and taking some of that load off of our DPW. Because here we are in winter, we've got a town that primarily, any resident in town walks, especially students, and we had kids walking in Little Fourth Street because sidewalks aren't plowed and that's not safe. So when we have our DPW overloaded, having to go, you know, cemetery, go, "Oh, we gotta go help the Water Department, gotta go help the Sewer Department." Well, why isn't the Sewer Department taking care of their stuff? Why isn't the Water Department? And maybe it's coming from me, where down in Potley, we, the village, yeah, I'm DPW, I'm water and sewer. We do pretty much everything we can in-house and if we can't, we hire out. So, yeah, they want that trailer for water tools, but that should be the Water Department paying for that, not DPW. And the Water Department and Sewer Department should be starting to pick up more of their stuff. So you're right, I don't support that ask. I know that sucks, but realistically, the Water Department and Sewer Department need to start taking on more responsibility. They get paid pretty good money and they should be supplying that equipment to fix their stuff. That's my opinion.
Well, I mean, maybe we can get the- Right now, the Water and Sewer doesn't have anybody. They've got two people. Water's got two.
I mean, we've got three guys.
None of them are certified, I know, but none of them are certified on any equipment. So you gotta have the equipment.
Well, could this trailer come out of the water, buddy?
That's what I was just, yeah.
Even though DPW's gonna be parked down there?
When we, when we talk in water and sewer in June-
Right.
They're, right. That might be the discussion of how you're gonna do it.
I can understand the need for this. I can also understand the need for another vehicle. You got two small dump trucks down there.
We don't have enough people to drive them. The amount of- We've got three people with twelve trucks.
I knew we got plenty of vehicles.
I'm getting at, you got your cemetery people. They often have a truck. You got Festus at the bar often has a truck. You know?
You gotta juggle a little bit.
They get pretty thin, it gets pretty thin quickly.
Yeah, I don't see that. I don't see that at all.
Well, you, trust me, it does.
Well, I mean, think about it. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna drive some equipment for Festus someplace, one of the guys drives a Festus for the equipment someplace and comes back and goes to wherever he's gonna work with the truck. Festus can get back up in the afternoon. I don't know.
Sometimes it works out that way and sometimes it can't work out that way.
I don't know.
But, which brings me to a point I'm gonna say. It's brush trucks, if the fire company wants to get rid of, with no miles on it, a good body, a good running truck for a long time for the DPW has their supply truck. I think, I think it would save us tons of money in the long run. Is that a good idea?
I look at that and I'm saying, if I can get $20,000 for that in trade for the new truck, I want the $20,000.
Right, but if you go out and buy that truck, you're gonna spend almost $100,000. So if we need another truck, this is, that's a cheaper option.
I'm-
And it's a good condition truck.
When DPW comes in and talks budget, which they've already done, "They want a truck, let's talk budget." I don't want to be solving a truck problem after we've already done that. It's my problem. I got, you have to, there's, there's an opinion that we have a ton of trucks and equipment and we don't need, how much more do we need for our 25 miles of road in our, in what we have? I'm-
So going back to that, you got a old back truck down at the DPW garage. What's, is that even serviceable anymore? Do they even use that?
Once in a while, I think they do. I think we're good.
Right, no, I know, I know.
We're spinning our wheels on these, that's why these a la carte things.
Yeah.
They're all needed, but-
The cement pad we discussed, right? And we think we're gonna be okay with that?
I'll have to get, I got quotes, it was last summer, I think, so I'll get more quotes.
Okay. Staging for the Memorial Day Parade. I think, I think there's, there's, let me see what the, there's talk of the Legion to do something.
I wonder if they could help us out with it.
There is, they're talking about putting a permanent structure.
They were talking about that gazebo, which I think is a great idea and I support that 100%.
I think there still is. I'll get with Sean. Sean was gonna propose it. And I missed the meeting, he was going to propose it. I don't know if he did and I haven't ever worried about it since, so.
Yeah, Joe.
If I could, if I could put a plug for, if the Legion, which I own a member of, if the Legion wanted to do something like a gazebo, maybe they could just donate staging. And I say that because the gazebo, putting gazebo there is just going to quickly turn into a house for my vagrants, my drug use and-
I get that.
I'm gonna have people tucking underneath it, hiding behind it.
Then you've gotta find somebody to pick that up. Because what happens is-
We can't do that. Yeah.
What happens is, yeah, there's two or three guys that end up setting it up and taking it down and they're getting older.
Yeah, I understand, but that's because they're letting us use their, their equipment. If we had the equipment, I would just have me and they could just go put it up. Or whoever, like, because I helped break it down. So, putting up a permanent structure for people to hide under and animals to destroy is, that would be-
It wouldn't have to be like that.
It wouldn't have to be.
It could be designed so they couldn't get under it, number one. And we have a police department and we have other people in town that can run their pails out of there in short order.
At 2:00 AM, there's nobody out there though.
At 3:00 AM.
When the damage is gonna happen, there's nobody gonna be there.
The short, in order, in order-
I just can't, I can't see doing it.
For the a la carte thing we're saying, I'd say, that's why I made the statement earlier, probably don't support any of them right now. They're not, they're not needs or great ideas, they just haven't been fully worked out. And until we get there, we could spin our wheels forever on it.
Yeah, so at this point, no a la carte.
No a la carte, that's what I'd recommend.
So what else are we doing here, revenue? Are we to that point yet?
I think so.
What's the ballot questions?
So there was talk of one ballot question for the fire truck.
Mm-hmm.
At this point. There's still time if you've got other ideas, anyone? All right, the revenues, I have a couple of questions.
So our revenue, I mean, revenues are pretty self-explanatory, I guess. We did see, we did see a strong bump in revenues by about $50,000 this year. Some spots are down, but overall, our non-tax revenue, our non, you know, property tax revenue is up 50K, which is positive.
Could you explain some of that for the public?
Sure. So the town, we pay our bills primarily through property tax, but there are also other sources of revenue that come out. So I'll just, I can use Town Clerk fees because everybody knows the Town Clerk. She gets paid for recording fees, dog licenses, marriage licenses. All that rolls up into our, that and included everything else, that rolls up into how much money the town brings in. And then we apply that towards the budget that you just finished to pay that budget off. Was that, was that clear? Kind of?
So that's the three, like $3 every time you renew, you do your registration, your car registration at the Town Clerk?
It goes into the pot.
That $3 goes into that pot.
Yeah. When I looked at the, using your example, the Town Clerk fees, and it looked like from the budget, which was revenues of $25,006 for the year, fiscal year '24, '25, to a proposed budget of only $15,005, there was a $10,000 less in revenues on the clerk fees? I'm looking up to see where that is and it looks like under recording?
Yeah, that's a steep drop.
I'm just, it was more, I know you don't, that's not something you can control, but I'm going, that, it looked kinda hinky when I-
That is very hinky.
Is that a change in our system?
No, that might, that might just be a fat fingered it and it should be $19,000, not $1,900.
That was, I-
That would make way more sense.
And, I mean, billing is down and things like that, but it can't be down that much.
Because then, that $10,000, you know how we were 3.5% and you were at 2-point-something? Well, you take, if that was a bad number and the number, I'd like to think it probably hasn't changed much, that 25 is-
Because last year it wasn't much better. If the board doesn't mind, I'd like to change that to $19,000. The average is $19,500 for the last four years.
That's better than $1,900.
Yes, it is.
That's, 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 looks like it falls more closer to the line of where it was.
Thank you, Joe.
More or better. And I don't know what that, what that does for us, but it-
It helps.
It helps.
That won't, that won't change your budget.
It won't change my budget, okay.
But it'll bring in more money for revenue.
Okay, I'm still okay with that. That's good.
Well, you won't have to raise as much by taxes by $18,000.
Yes, that puts us at like $60,000 over what we brought in last year, so we're doing good.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions?
No. Joe was very nice to keep educating me on revenue because I call him up every time and say, "It just doesn't make sense to me." And it's because of that, about that $2 million in taxes that when you're trying to add it up on the line that you don't use on the first line, it's, that's why it doesn't happen.
It's confusing.
It's, so I made a book for myself because the first two years, I just, I would have to go and relearn it every time, so I made a book and I just follow through the book now and it, you know. Yeah, it's not easy, the stuff that we deal with.
Okay.
Anything else? Moving right along. And if anybody has anything for the, for the parking lot yell, if not?
On the budget, you're gonna clean that up and all I would ask is, will you be sending a fire to our meeting on the 7th, something to-
I will also.
Because we've covered so much, during the time off and my free time, I wanna look and see does it make-
Waiting for ice to-
Waiting for ice, signing the ice fishing, right?
It'll be a couple of days after tomorrow.
Probably not till the whole of January here for a while.
I'm thinking of putting lifesavers on all my tip-ups.
Oh, it's gonna be all my-
I was so happy when I saw the temperature and then it turned and I was like, nope.
Okay, board roundtable.
I don't have anything tonight. I've said everything.
I've got nothing.
Actually, I do have one thing if I could.
You always say that.
I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Easter.
Merry Christmas to you.
Back at ya.
I think I've said more than enough.
Well, let me join right in that. I had one thing that isn't that important, it'll come up later. We have a, oh, I'm sorry, we got some finance to do.
Yes, we do. Make a motion to pay the payroll of $40,239.03.
I have $40,000.
$40,000, right. Sorry, I'll make that motion again. I have a motion to make payroll of $40,239.03.
There's a, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Make a motion to pay the warrant of $139,004.03.
Second.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the checkbook is $1,113,671.44. Are you signed here?
Yeah.
Now we will do a-
You have a million dollars in the bank and you owe roughly about $5,000 for playground.
She's getting you so mad with that.
But we all, we all weigh in one.
And Bob's still gonna say that I'm tighter than bark on trees.
I am. Wouldn't pay a nickel to see Christ ride a bicycle.
And I just threw up your shower.
Does it look like we have an executive session?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for personnel under 1DSA 313A1.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.